We can ask Stephanie.
Okay.
She was telling me right before about, I think it was Stephanie.
I have to amend the agenda.
Yeah, so once it's been moved, it's travel.
Okay.
The agenda.
So you're going to move to reopen the session.
Okay.
And then after that, I'll move to approve the agenda. But did we get her amendment?
I think.
I'm moving to reopen.
I'll move to stay in the meeting.
She'll second if one of you asks for a vote. Make decisions.
I'd like to move to reopen the meeting.
Second.
I don't think your mic was on, Commissioner Bennie.
Second. I'll.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Motion carries.
Aye.
I'll wait for Commissioner Mayor and Albus to get eaten.
I'll take a motion to approve the, nope.
You need to call it, call the meeting to order.
I'd like to call the meeting to order.
First, we should adjourn the committee of the whole. So you can just, you can say, I declare the meeting adjourned.
I declare the meeting adjourned. And I'd like to.
Reopen.
Reopen.
We already did that. We're convening the regular meeting now.
Oh, you already did, okay.
Oh, convening the regular board meeting.
Ask me to take the role.
Secretary Ringo, will you take the role?
No, just to ask. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, nay. Oh, I mean, aye, sorry.
We're going to get it together here.
We need to, we need to, we need to take the role first before we move the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Taking the role on the regular meeting of September 28th at the time being 5:07 PM. Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Musich.
Present.
Commissioner Mens.
Here.
Commissioner Alper.
Present.
Commissioner Abene.
Present.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
President Forni.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Now, I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Oh.
You have a like.
I would like to amend the agenda. Can I have moved to amend the agenda?
Tell us what you're doing.
I am, I am requesting that an item that is coming up in the Admin Finance Committee, then get to the whole board.
And without the.
Resolution 2022-290 needs to be added.
I make a motion to add a resolution about the police pay, if it passes in committee. I make a motion.
Okay. Specka? Time out. Who's making the motion?
Oh, you're making a motion. I'm seconding it. Perfect.
I am making the motion on behalf of Admin and Finance.
And are you seconding that?
Say it. I second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It's up.
Next, we'll have.
First, we need to take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Yeah, you just have to vote on the amended agenda at this point.
Okay. Can we do? All those in favor of the amended agenda, excuse me, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Approval of minutes.
There aren't any.
We don't have any minutes. Closed sessions already happened. We have no reports up from the officers today, but.
But I will indicate that you will notice that our Superintendent Bangora is not present with us right now because Superintendent Bangora was invited by the White House to participate in their White House conference on hunger, nutrition, and health today, earlier today. He and the panel were welcomed by President Biden, pretty exciting. So we are very, very proud of his involvement. He is, though, I think, in the next minute, hopefully, going to be landing and so should be here later in the board meeting. So wanted you all to know why he's not present.
Thank you. Any reports up from outside committees or boards or commissions?
Yes, I serve on the Board of Investment and Taxation, and we did approve the maximum tax levy. We, the only thing that the Park Board did not get was the assets section that we were asking for, but the BET approved a 6.5% increase to the tax levy. There was, it was a 4-2 vote. We voted for, for the tax levy increase in the suggested by the mayor's budget. For those of you who are learning as well as I am, now the next step is it will go through City Council and there'll be some more budget negotiations going on. But there was an amendment or alternative resolution to lower the, the tax levy a little bit to lessen the impact on wards four and five because the taxes right now are spreading out in different ways. So, but we were, we voted for it, a 6.5% increase, and then we'll go on from there. That's it.
Any other reports or updates? I myself serve on the Youth Coordinating Board. However, I was not in attendance. Commissioner Mens was my twin substitute for that meeting. So if you could.
Yeah, I can give a report. So I did, I did attend that meeting as well because Director Arverson and I have been trying to get the YCB to be a conduit between our two organizations to identify some gaps that we do for after-school programming or other programming between those hours of three and six. Both of our organizations do a lot for youth, but there's still some missing gaps. So utilizing the Youth Coordinating Board as a way to discover some, some recommendations that we could take or not take, but just identifying what's happening with different youth. So that's where they're going right now.
Thank you very much. So we're just going to keep chugging along here until 5:30 where we have open time and then a 6:15 public hearing. So moving on to consent business, we have Resolution 2022-284. Director Arverson.
Actually, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is unless there's, anybody nervous in the discussion?
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes.
So you moved into then planning.
All right. We're moving on to the Planning Committee.
On, on behalf of the Planning Committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-276, a resolution of granting an access and license agreement to USI Wireless Incorporated, also doing business as US Internet Corp., for underground telecommunication fiber optic line in Kenwood Parkway and collecting appropriate fees associated with the access and license agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion?
Not seeing any lights.
Not seeing any lights? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving right along to the Admin, Administration and Finance.
There's one more.
Oh, just kidding. JK, bring it back.
And also from the Planning Committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2022-278, resolution approving the 26th Avenue North Overlook and Orbin Ole Olson Park Trail Connection Concept Plan within Above the Falls Regional Park.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing one light here. Commissioner Thompson.
I'm just curious if we have any sort of update as to how we were going to navigate the, the easement with the business that we would have to, like the one that was speaking to us a couple of weeks ago, and I've completely forgotten their name. I apologize if you're watching. I'm sorry. Yeah, just where that was.
Acting, acting President Smith and Commissioner Thompson, we've, we've had some movements. We had a couple of meetings after yesterday with the, with the terminal manager there. The first meeting was with just staff, just kind of getting the lay of the land and kind of just building a conversation with them. It went really well. There's also representatives from Sandstone there to kind of build a conversation because they all come as, as one group. So that went really well. We were able to kind of explain to them kind of the rough limits of what we would be kind of using as part of their land. They, they really just mainly expressed a desire for safety to be considered kind of at the, the highest priority. So that meant that meeting went really well. And then we met with them a little bit later on that afternoon with our assessor, and he basically walked around the site and did some, a few measurements and that type of thing. So it is going according to plan. It's going to take several more months, but we're going to work on it.
Do you, do you get the, I, I just, I want us to be good partners, especially on the north side. And, and so are you getting the, the sort of, dare I say, the feeling that it's all going to work out? Or I know that the last time we were discussing, there might be some sort of idea of like we would force this issue. Just, just curious your general feeling of the situation since obviously it's not been fully taken care of by this vote.
Acting President Smith and Commissioner Thompson, it's, to me, it feels good, but that's, no, that's just my feeling. There's, there's a lot of things that we have to kind of talk about. It's, it's, it's a process and we're going to be communicating the whole way. They've been very open to meeting with us. They have not been motivational at all. They've been very, microphone. They've been very helpful for us in, in allowing us access to their property. It's, it's, it's really an amazing operation that they have there. There's, you know, 120-ton train cars that come in and unload, and it's, it's a huge operation, and it's something that we don't want to mess with. We really want to work with them on it and not affect their operation. And, and we believe we have a design solution that, that fits.
Thank you. That's, I just wanted an update. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Mens?
Can you stay up there for a second? So what is this, so approving this plan, where does that, that gives us leverage to sort of negotiate with Sandstone or Continental, was it Continental cement?
Continental cement.
So yeah, just kind, can you walk me through like what happens next as a result of us approving this wonderful plan?
Yeah, acting President Smith and Commissioner Mens. Really what happens now is, is once, once we have a concept, we can start designing this thing. Because right now, it's, it's really just conceptual. It's, it's bubble diagrammatic. It's, it's, it's simple right now. It's, it's an idea, and we really want to be able to develop that idea. And with that, we would be working with those property owners to make it safe. So we'd be starting to talk about exactly where the trail is, exactly where we might put a, a fence barrier, because we know that they'll be need, we'll need to have some type of barrier so somebody doesn't walk onto their property, things like that. So really, it, it goes into detailed design on what we would call design development. And then from there, as we develop those conversations, we actually start into, actually creating the contract documents, the drawings and the specifications and all that stuff. So it's going to be a few months to, to have those conversations. It's going to be a few months, concurrent months, to actually do the design work. It's going to take some time to get this thing, get this thing going.
Commissioner Bennie? Thank you. So similar to that question is if, so as this goes forward and there's the need to use the, some of the land that is deeded to Continental, I think there could be, the ideal would be to get an easement for the trail. And I did hear the word condemnation or eminent domain or something like that last time. So either of those items, and maybe that's for Counsel Rice, do either of those items require board action in the future? Us being the easementee or whatever, not the grantor, but the receiver and condemnation. Counsel Rice?
President Protem Smith. That's a very good question. Commissioner Bennie, if a design could be worked out, as Mr. Peterson said, and we could reach an agreement with Continental and also be Burlington Northern, another two property owners that we've identified that we'd have to deal with, there wouldn't be any need for the board to take, well, there would be some need, obviously, if there was an agreement with them to acquire their land or pay any, get an easement. It wouldn't actually be an acquisition. It would be, we're asking for easements, not to take the property, but easement through those two properties. We, this would come back to the board. If there was an, an effort to condemn the property, the board would have to act on it. So all you're acting on tonight is just the plan. This is the plan you'd like to have. If there's a next step, this will come back in front of the board. I was on the tour with Tyler on Monday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. The week's gone by fast. It's quite an amazing operation over there. It's very clean. They run a lot of Portland cement through there, which is essential for buildings, streets, roads, buildings, everything else. They've maintained their property extremely well. It's green space. It's very, I mean, it's, it, there is noise there, but they, it's very efficient. The trains back up, come across the track over the 25th Avenue thing, then they back into the property, then they back out of the property and take the Portland cement away. They have this huge 134-foot silo that holds, I don't know, 200,000 tons of cement, and then the other trucks, the, they'll offload the cement, the train trucks, and then the cement trucks will pull in and they load them up. And it's, it's a very efficient space, and I think we would want to make sure that we don't interfere with their operation, and hopefully they can accommodate our trail operation. And time will tell. But the board will see this again if the plan, you know, we can make it work and bring it forward to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, moving forward with approving the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Admin and Finance Committee?
Yes. On behalf of Administration and Finance, I would like to move Resolution 2022-256, resolution, awarding a construction contract to Minger Construction Companies in the amount of $4,182,546.70 for Bryn Mawr Meadows Park Site General Improvement Project, bid event 2075, pending approval by the Bassett Creek Watershed Management Committee, Commission, excuse me, City of Minneapolis Procurement Division and Civil Rights Department, and authorizing administrative use of a construction contingency up to $60,300 for necessary construction change orders that may arise with the contract and amending the 2022 Capital Improvement Program to allocate $170,872 from the Bryn Mawr neighborhood portion of the Dibblehorns in Parkland Dedication Fund.
I would second that motion with the clarification that the resolution number is 2022-265.
Thank you. I, I don't even know what I said, so thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have a staff amendment on this.
Right. Exactly. Oh. Yes, we'd like to accept the amendment that the staff has noticed, a minor but major title.
Yeah.
Point of inquiry, are you making a motion to amend the item in front of us?
Thank you. Yes, I am.
Lovely, thanks. I would second that.
All those in favor of the amended Resolution 2022-265? Say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? That passes.
Just out of clarification, that, do I interpret that as the vote on the amendment? Okay. So now, okay, thank you.
First the amendment, and then now on to the amended resolution.
Now we are moving forward. We're voting on the amended resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And.
Also, on behalf of Administration and Finance, I would like to move Resolution 2022-275, resolution approving two one-year license agreements with Vio and Bird, I hope I'm saying that right, respectively, for authorization to place equipment on NPRB property and permission to operate shared scooter programs throughout the Minneapolis Park System.
All, a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any, oh, all right. Moving on.
One more from Admin and Finance, Resolution 2022-277. I will move the resolution approving a lease agreement with Ruth, Ruth Paisley LLC leasing commercial space at 1828 Marshall Street Northeast, units eight, 10, and 19, located within the Above the Falls Regional Park for terms of six months and two years, respectively, effective October 1st, 2022.
Second? All right. For this one, I believe we need a roll call vote. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Oh. You have a clarification. It, should people be asked if they would like to have some discussion before we?
Oh. Yes. Any discussion on Resolution 2022-277?
No.
All right. Secretary, I think we need a roll call. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner, or Commissioner Musich?
Aye.
Commissioner Mens?
Aye.
Commissioner Alper?
Aye.
Commissioner Abene?
Aye.
Uh, pro, what did, call someone?
President Protem.
President Protem Smith. Aye. President Forni?
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent. That passes.
Secretary always asks me to use Latin when I'm available.
We appreciate it. Moving right along, we have about three minutes before our open time, our time's certain. So we're going to head into the Recreation Committee.
There's nothing.
Oh.
Onto unfinished business.
We're moving on to unfinished business.
I'll move Resolution 2022-262, resolution approving an agreement between Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and the City of Minneapolis in the form of a redevelopment contract relating to the Upper Harbor Terminal redevelopment line within the Above the Falls Regional Park and related to the advancement of a park at Upper Harbor Terminal. Second.
Any discussion?
I believe we have a presentation on this item.
All right. A presentation is given up.
Good evening, President Protem Smith and Commissioners. My name is Julie Aldrich. I'm the project manager for the Upper Harbor Terminal Project. I'll share a brief presentation with you this evening to provide an overview of the project, review the components of the redevelopment contract before you this evening for your approval, and highlight milestones, approvals, and next steps for the project. The UHT site is located in the McKinley neighborhood of North Minneapolis, between the I-94 freeway and Mississippi River, adjacent to the Dolling and 33rd access roads. The future parkland is currently owned by the City of Minneapolis. Parkland proposed for UHT is within the boundary of the Above the Falls Regional Park. The master plan for the Above the Falls calls for purchasing properties necessary to establish the adopted park boundary on both sides of the river, and as funds allow, develop parks and programming to create an interconnected park, trail, and parkway experience for north and northeast Minneapolis residents. The coordinated plan shows the anticipated development, while the details of the development will be determined over decades. The interface between the park and adjacent land uses is an iterative process, and coordination will continue long term. The current plan maximizes flexibility to allow NPRB and community members to respond and shape the park as the area changes. The draft coordinated plan, as approved by the city in 2021, envisioned 20 acres of new riverfront park, 500,000 to 1 million in annual revenue to community entities generated by First Avenue ticketed events, over 520 proposed housing units, 300 estimated living wage jobs, and a health and wellness community hub, 45,000 square feet of ground floor commercial and community space, 1,200 construction jobs created with a 302 million. and community space, 1,200 construction jobs created, with a 302 million estimated development costs. Development partners for the project include-
Julie, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. It's 5:30, and we have to move to open time. Why have you come back, though? She don't go far. It is 5:30 PM, and I am opening the park board meeting, and I'm going to read the open time rules. Thank you to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during open time. Before we start, I want to provide an abbreviated version of the open time board rules. All individuals wishing to speak may call in before noon the day of the meeting to be placed on the agenda, or can sign up at the board meeting prior to the start of open time. I will be calling on people on the sign up list only. Open time for the public input shall not exceed a total of 15 minutes, with a time limit to be allotted by the president or myself, President Protem, Pro, yeah?
Protem.
Protem. Please watch the timer to be considerate of all others here to speak and stay within your allocated time, allotted time. During open time, public testimony will be allowed and given without debate, and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. Two types of items are not appropriate for open time in order to protect the privacy of all individuals. Those are pending litigations and personnel issues. Please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues. We will not tolerate any discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone. So please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with the policy. This board made the decision many years ago to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. Under Robert Rules of Order, the ceding of time to another person is not allowed. So only those signed up to speak may only speak for their allotted amount of time. We also request that each speaker provide his or her name and address. And we have six speakers for tonight's open time, and we'll give everyone two minutes to speak. And the first person is Jack Warner, and after Jack, we have Patrick Marsh.
Don't start me up. I want to get prepared here. And by the way, it's Jake Warner.
Okay, Jake, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thank you, Jake.
Okay, good evening, Jake Warner, West Side of Cedar Lake, 31-years resident. My impetus for being here is the Sunday Star Tribune article, "Left Adrift by Q-U-A-Y Dispute." Electric line severed, stairs to landing barred, water taxi business shuttered. Draconian actions, and what was the harm to the public? Did this operation impede in any way public access to the river, to parkland? No, it provided river access for the public. It provided a public good. Now I'm going to shift to the east shore at Cedar Lake and Kennelworth Channel, where the park board has allowed private residents exclusive use of public parkland for 80 years. I have a memo here, Control of Invasive and Aquatic Species, AIS 2013. Renee Lyon, Esquire, Real Estate Coordinator for the Park Board, has reviewed the park board's records for Cedar Lake and discovered that there were a series of temporary, temporary permits issued in various years from 1938 to 1950 to property owners whose land abutted park board property on Cedar Lake and the Kennelworth Channel. It is highly likely, however, that none of the property owners to whom the original permit was issued still owns the property, and that any permit previously issued should have expired. More important, even if such a permit is still extant, the park board has the authority to revoke any and such all permits. And what is the impact to the general public by the park board allowing this situation to exist? Oh, for 80 years for the privileged, wealthy residents in these 16 homes? Let me just say this, you are stewards of the parkland for the public. This is a breach, a breach of public trust. Please fix it now, and thank you, and keep the Minneapolis Water Taxi in operation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Patrick Marsh, and then Corey Parkes?
Please forgive me if I said your last name wrong.
Sorry. Good evening, thank you, Madam President, Commissioners, and NPRB staff. I am here to speak in favor of saving the boat landing on the west side of Nicollet Island, referred to as some by Kerwin's Quay. I've spoken to a few of the Commissioners previously, but would ask for a formal opportunity to speak in more detail. Some of you may not be familiar with the location or the story. The last I met with Shane Stenzel, he told me that he had briefed the Commissioners. I would request the opportunity to do the same. One of the values listed in NPRB website mission is accountability, meaning public input through the board Commissioners. The situation at the west side of Nicollet Island is one of the features that helps make Nicollet Island the most unique and wonderful park in the Minneapolis Park Systems, but this was not always the case. By 1983, Nicollet Island had become urban blight, and the plan was to demolish the buildings. 37-year-old John Kerwin literally rushed to the courthouse and purchased the Grove Street Flats with the plan to rehabilitate the old buildings and desirable condos. At the time, he recognized the area outside the Grove Street Flats that had been the discharge point for industrial waste was the perfect spot for a small boat landing. He was given permission to construct the quay. Since 1983, the small landing has been the host of as many as five houseboats. In the last 39 years, the NPRB has tolerated the quay with some reluctance. I would ask that the Commissioners rethink this reluctance. The quay is a symbol of everything positive about the NPRB mission related to the Mississippi River. The quay has been activating the river since 1983. The current situation is also an opportunity to practice another of the NPRB tactics, the ability to be agile and respond to opportunities as they arise. The quay is just such an opportunity. The situation at Nicollet Island is not complicated, but it is also not as black and white as some of you have been led to believe. I will email each of you individually. I ask that you reply, and ideally be prepared to meet one of our group at the site and learn the situation, not too complicated, with your own eyes. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Alper?
Yes, President Protem, is it possible for them to pass in their written statements?
If you could pass your written statements into Katie there. Thank you. All right, up next, Corey, and then Elizabeth Flannery.
Hello, greetings, everyone. Captain Corey Parkes, Minneapolis Water Taxi. You probably have all heard about me by now in some of the press, and glad to be here. I've always been a proponent of the park board and a volunteer, an ambassador, and I believe that one of the most important attributes that the park board and the public can do is revitalize this Mississippi River here in Minneapolis, such a great river. And so that's been my goal over the last, especially six years with the Minneapolis Water Taxi. So one point is to raise awareness, thanks to Jake and Patrick there for their statements, and awareness of the destruction, possible destruction of the quay on Nicollet Island, the boat landing dock. It's public access, the only access on Nicollet Island, a lot of history. Also, that, you know, the, the way that Minneapolis Water Taxi was shut down is not comfortable with me working with parks, to shut us down for the rest of the season, mid-season. I actually had, if you don't know, an agreement to remove the houseboat and taxis at the end of the season, October 31st, and that was suddenly changed, in any matter. I invite you all to come out, like Pat has said, and come out on the water taxi. We'd love to have you and show you around, show you what we're doing with the Mississippi River here in Minneapolis. So thanks for your time, and hope to see you soon.
Elizabeth Flannery and Scott Osen, after you.
Great, thank you. President Protem Smith and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Elizabeth Flannery. I live at 15 First Street South in Minneapolis, and I'm here to speak in favor of keeping the quay in operation as it currently exists today. I believe that our small group who have been active on the quay in the last, I've been a part owner of the chateau, which is one of the current houseboats currently moored there for the last eight years. I believe we're actually in agreement on big-picture issues and vision with the park board here. The two key principles that we believe in is the river needs to be accessible to the public, and people should be welcome on the river. The quay infrastructure, as has been said here, was built 40 years ago intentionally, and with the intentional aim of meeting those two goals of that vision, activating the downtown Minneapolis riverfront, and making the river a part of the community, and bringing the community to the river. The quay infrastructure was planned and thoroughly vetted and approved by multiple government entities at the time, the City of Minneapolis, the Metropolitan Council, and the DNR. That was very forward-thinking, in my opinion, by those entities to support this activity on the Minneapolis downtown riverfront, and the mooring of boats there and creating access to the river for recreation. The current action of the Minneapolis Park Board to dismantle this longstanding quay and river access has taken a huge step backwards, and not at all forwarding the goals of activating downtown riverfront. The current action, our experience is that this action is also being taken without due process and without community input. We've reached out to Commissioners who have not been informed of this history or action at all until we have, we have made the contact, and I see that as a big problem for this board. As a major city, Minneapolis, with the Mississippi River running straight through the heart of its downtown, Minneapolis has been a unique city in the world not to embrace water taxi the way other cities have of this scale. I am just here to request ongoing discussion about this, and an opportunity for us to be heard, and more public input on this, and to get at the question, the primary question, what is the harm? What has been the harm historically of having this quay, and what is the current harm? And what is the urgency of taking this action now without proper discussion or due process? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Scott Osen, and then David Flannery.
I feel like I'm on Shark Tank again. Elizabeth Flannery, the queen of affordable housing, myself, Corey, who have been involved in the houseboat for many years now, and I think you have to recognize Corey and the water taxi, he's providing a service, an amenity for the Minneapolis community. Not only that, he might be the next person to pull a human out of the Mississippi River because he spends more time going up and down the river, entertaining, and giving the history of the river to people. So definitely take him up on his word, get on the water taxi. We probably have another month left of some nice weather. And I came here 10 years ago pitching a $50,000 gift to the park board that I was going to bring back from Santa Monica, which is one of the biggest attractions they've got in Santa Monica, and I couldn't get a meeting with the park board. I like to do things for the city, I like to do things for the people. I'm the lucky guy that got people rollerblading around the lakes in the 80s and 90s. So my claim to fame has been the rollerblades. So that's one of the things I brought to the city. The next thing I wanted to bring to the city, or the park board, is a $5 million attraction that I developed, that I was going to propose to the park board. Here's an attraction that could bring a million dollars of revenue back to the park board, which is what would be nice. I can't even get a meeting to do that. So that, when I had the opportunity to talk tonight, it's one of the things I wanted to pitch. But at the same time, I'll leave the rest for a meeting with the park board, if any one of you can open the door for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We got our last speaker, David Flannery?
Thank you for hearing us tonight. I just want to say that I think it's really unfair that the park board closed down a man's business right in the, the end of his year. It's, I don't know why it had to happen, I don't know what the danger was, but it seems really grossly unfair that the water taxi was shut down a month before the end of its season. The other thing is, I don't know why the park board is acting now when it's been there for 30 years. And it seems to me that the more people who are on the river, and the more people who use the river, the better it will be for the city, and this is like one step back. So I just encourage the board to try to figure out ways where people could be on the river and live on the river, and recreate on the river, and spend time there. It's, I was lucky, I grew up right on Marshall Street Northeast, and we swam in the river every day as kids, and I've been a part of that. The river's been just a part of my life for all of my life, and I just hate to see it go backwards. It's going in a really nice direction now, and this seems like a step, a step back, and for no reason, no reason that I've heard explained by anyone. Thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. David was our last speaker on the sign up sheet, so we will close open time and head back to Julie.
Within the development vision for the larger UHT site, the 20-acre parkland spans the entire length of the UHT property along the riverfront to the east and development parcels to the west. Much of the park is linear with a five-acre central core park space. Linear park areas feature the parkway road with parking, which will also serve as a city street, with separated bike and pedestrian trails, vegetative buffers, a gently sloped vegetated shoreline, and stormwater treatment areas. The main entrance to the parkway and park facilities will be via Dowling Avenue. Connections to the north and south beyond the park are planned to create continuous riverfront access and green space, and can be completed with further land acquisition. Although the Upper Harbor Terminal has been the site of planning, visioning, and speculation for decades, the current process began in 2015. From 2015 to 2019, NPRB gathered substantial public input on the future park. In 2019, with a park boundary established by the city-approved Upper Harbor Terminal concept plan, the City of Minneapolis and NPRB branched into collaborative but separate planning processes. From 2020 through 2022, planning processes continued to move forward, with the park bid package completion anticipated for fall of 2022. Construction work began in 2022 with non-native vegetation removal, rail removal, and grading and demolition work to prepare the site for park construction. We anticipate bidding the park project in early 2023, and beginning construction in 2023 with anticipated completion in 2024 and early 2025. At this stage in the process, the city and the NPRB are executing a number of legal and contractual agreements that authorize work to continue towards implementation. The redevelopment contract before you this evening formalizes commitment between the NPRB and City of Minneapolis regarding respective roles and responsibilities for the land conveyance and execution of the park construction project. This contract details the obligations, rights, and responsibilities of both parties, and specifies the standards and conditions that will govern development of the property. It includes conditions for land conveyance minimum planned park improvements by the NPRB, parkway infrastructure improvements by the city via MOU agreement for the parkway road, MOU agreements for district stormwater system, and funding allocations. Coordinated demolition and grading work is underway and will be completed prior to conveyance of the land from the city to the NPRB. Components of this scope of work include city and NPRB cost share, demolition of structures on parkland, and grading of shoreline and park, and grading of parkway roadbed and stormwater BMPs. Minimum park improvements will include five-acre central park space defined on the north, west, and south by Parkway Road and multi-use trails, the east edge defined by the river, and an existing structurally sound river wall to be retained. Some existing industrial infrastructure such as the domes will be removed, red grain elevators, some overhead conveyors and storage silos will be secured and repurposed. Public activity areas are focused in the northern portion of the park while the southern area is devoted to gardens, green infrastructure, working and learning areas, pathways to provide access to a more naturalized experience. Most of the park area will be vegetated, including shoreline, stormwater management areas, and educational gardens. Because the UHT site is largely non-vegetated at this time, it presents an opportunity to return a large section of river corridor to a diverse and thriving ecosystem. Amenities are grouped to limit site footprints and enhance user convenience. Core park elements include circulation pathways, flexible plaza space, flexible lawn and picnic area, ADA water access, temporary mobile buildings with restrooms and a shelter, as well as green infrastructure training centers and gardens and natural areas. City-funded infrastructure improvements will include one north-south vehicular circulation corridor that will include a city water main and serve as both typical street access to development parcels and as Parkway and will follow typical Parkway design and aesthetic standards. Improved vehicle access and pedestrian access at 33rd Avenue and Dowling Avenue, a first phase of Parkway Road with lighting and vegetation from just south of the park to the northern end of the property, water main and utility connections, and Excel powerline relocation, which will remove a tower from MPRB park space and relocate existing wiring across the park and river. MPRB is in collaboration with the city, MWMO, and the development team to develop a regulatory-level district stormwater plan to address the larger site's stormwater management requirements in a coordinated manner, as well as explore regional stormwater and reuse system to manage and treat additional stormwater that currently runs under the site from upstream areas in North Minneapolis and reuse the regional stormwater on the MPRB and development parcels. As a partner in this collaborative and progressive process, we see a great opportunity to improve habitat in the Mississippi River critical area and to improve the quality of stormwater before discharging to the Mississippi River. An MOU is anticipated to be developed in early 2023 to address all partner roles, responsibilities, and funding commitments for the project. The funding sources and uses summary shows the balance of funding is $15.4 million. $6 million will come from state bonds, $6 million will come from Met Council, and $3 million is coming from Hennepin County and MWMO grants. The MPRB has worked collaboratively with the city to ensure all required approvals, processes are met effectively for both partners. Recent MPRB approvals have included the park concept plan approval in late 2021, a contract amendment in early 2022, and most recently an MWMO grant award for $2.6 million this summer. At this time, we need to process the redevelopment contract with the city, which is before you today, for consideration. Following this approval process, we'll be bringing a number of items to you in the coming months, which will include an MOU for the Parkway Road, a contract amendment, an MOU for the district stormwater system, and finally, both land conveyance and the construction contract for the park in early 2023. When implemented, the Upper Harbor Terminal Park will be a key achievement in the Above the Falls Master Plan. This exciting and transformational project will be the fifth major parkland implementation project along the North Riverfront in the past 10 years. The Upper Harbor Terminal Project will add 20 acres of new public space and parkland to the MPRB system and city, one mile of restored shoreline, and public access to riverfront where there currently is none, and one mile of Parkway added to the grand rounds. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I'm not sure who was first, so I'll go with President Forney.
Thank you, President Protem Smith. I just get so excited about this. I've worked on this for a couple of decades, and to see it coming so close, it just really excites me. Thank you, thank you, Julie and Saf, all the work that you've done. Is there any, I can't remember, what's the name of the boat that's down on Bohemian Flats? Paradise?
Paradise Lady.
Yeah. Is there any that type of programming thought of, you know, at Upper Harbor?
President Protem Smith, I'm going to say President Forney. I didn't get a brief on that combination. No, we are not considering programming for boating activities other than potentially North Star Community Rowing, who has an existing access on the site and would continue to run their programming out of the southern area of the site.
Great. And as far as, I think somebody else can answer this question, as far as what is at Bohemian Flats, that is an MOU, am I correct, that we have, or is it a permit that we have down there with them? I see a shaking of a head behind you.
President Protem, President Forney, President Protem Smith, President Forney, I actually thought Annie might be around the corner there, but that is a concession agreement that we have at Bohemian Flats.
Great. Just curious, what are the potentials and stuff like that? So this is so exciting. Thank you for the work, and I can't wait to have the actual transfer of land and move on forward. Thank you all.
All right. Commissioner Abini.
Thank you, President Protem Smith, and I really appreciate the presentation. And I'm wondering, I just wanted to comment about the MOU regarding regional stormwater. I think that's very exciting because I think that, you know, any kind of regional opportunity should be seized, and we know the water's heading to that, to the river, so intercepting it and treating it before it gets there is fantastic. If there's any way to think about, I'm just putting that out there, any way to benefit from that financially, I think that should be at least on the table as you're negotiating with the city. I'm not totally sure how that would work, other than, you know, some of the developers are required to do some stormwater management on their own sites. If they take advantage of the system, what does that mean for the fees that they pay and who's getting credits and things like that? So there's the city stormwater credit. I also was, I really keyed into in the packet of materials, the redevelopment contract that you entered into with the city. And I was actually familiar with another project that I actually worked in my day job, and that apparently wasn't part of it, I won't name the project here, but I think that's a very good tool upfront in a project like this, an opportunity like this, I think, to figure out where things need to go and especially be able to negotiate the stormwater, the way the land is platted and all of that. And then finally, I had one question, maybe Ms. Aldrich could come back up, but when I was looking at this, I think, I also hope that my fellow commissioners, I think it would be good to notice that the access to the park and really a lot of the private parcels across from the park will only be available from Parkway. So there will be access at essentially Dowling and 33rd, but there's no city grid coming in between. And in fact, they did have some city right-of-way on 36 that was never an improved street, but they vacated it to the developers presumably. So the Park Board is serving the purpose of providing a street grid in the form of a Parkway. They're going to use our development standards for that, which is good, or our Parkway standards, but I'm just saying that that, to me, isn't ideal. And that if at all possible, just putting that out there, that if the city could have retained the right-of-way, even if they couldn't build a road now because there is a railroad tractor, they could have at least had a view corridor or maybe a pedestrian or bicycle or other mode corridor through there. That would have been more public access to the parkland. So instead, you've got to come in on either end, and there's five blocks in between. So I've seen the city do this in another development recently, and I think that they should be the first entity to provide street access, in my opinion, not the parks. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Abini. Commissioner Alper.
Thank you. This was a really great presentation. I appreciated both the, going into the, kind of the partnership with the details of the redevelopment contract and also just an overview of the project. Again, it's always great to get a refresher. Something that I just, it brought up to me, looking at the, I believe it was the vision slide, you know, just thinking about the 520 housing units and this new amenity and entertainment venue, you know, that's a lot of people wanting to visit this space or who live there, and I did not see Metro Transit on the list. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, that seems, I'm not saying that's our responsibility, but at all, but do you know if they're involved or can you speak to that or can they get on the bandwagon now?
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Alper. Yes, in fact, we have had conversations with Metro Transit. They are apprised of the project and have been involved in some of the initial planning conversations. There has been conversation with Metro Transit about adding a route through the development in the future. Those are not commitments at this point in time, certainly kind of future-focused goals and endeavors, but certainly providing transit to the site and to the park is a priority in terms of how we're planning for people to access the area in the future.
Yeah, just to follow up to that, you know, I know they have a limited budget, like all agencies, and I know they have a driver shortage, but certainly, to me, this seems like it could be something that they could apply for additional funding for and to say, you know, that I believe that we really need transit service to this area to be, make this park successful and not have it be clogged with congestion and traffic. And I think there is funding available, especially now, to help people get outdoors, I think at the federal level, and it would be, you know, great to have a conversation with them to see what could happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Minz.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice President, well, President Protem. And Commissioner Abini, that reminded me, so like, this park is really going to add to the entire Parkway system by a mile? Is that what I'm hearing? That we're building new road or Parkway that will increase the amount of Parkway's that we have in the city? When is the last time that we constructed additional Parkway?
West River Parkway. Down from the Guthrie down, from Plymouth Avenue down.
And when, I mean, how long ago was that?
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Minz, so that would have been in the 80s, late 80s. It probably was finished construction in the 90s, and then we finished that connection from Bohemian Flats to the Menegascow site. That was finished in 98 or 99.
Okay. And so, and I didn't look at the funding structures too closely, but is that going to come from the money that we coordinate with the city, like the, I know it's $750,000 that we get to maintain the Parkway's? Is that coming from that money or is it be new money to construct it, but then we would just maintain it? I'm looking for excuses to get more money for the Parkway's, and this seems to be a really good one.
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Minz. So the funding for the Parkway construction is coming from state bonds, and so there was a $15 million state bond allocation to the partnership between the City of Minneapolis and the Minneapolis Park Board, and so that was split. Nine went to the city and six goes to the Park Board, but it can be fluid if there's a need for it to be, but at this point in time, that is how it's being split. And the city Public Works Department is covering the cost of the Parkway construction, so they will be constructing those improvements, carrying the contract for that work as well as funding that scope of work for the overall project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Protem Smith. I hope I'm getting that right. I'm loud. This is an incredibly complicated project that I know more than I wish sometimes. You know, per Commissioner Alper's commentary, that was actually, there were people on the north side who were advocating for the blue line to go along that, just to hit that site. But of course, there's so many things. I also don't know, I'm curious, but this is really just to speak toward my colleagues' comments and questions that I was hearing. You know, the same as with our 26th Avenue overlook, there are concerns of, and I think what we're doing with the park is amazing, but there are concerns in general with like the Parkway. I've heard from other businesses up there, just the amount of trucks that roll through all the time, and like, it's not just cement, it's, there's a shingle company, there's, of course, Semstone, like, there's like, so it's interesting that we're bringing up these questions, and of course, anytime someone can mine for more money for parks, I would love that. I don't really have a question except for just a comment of thank you for the good work and that I really, it's such vague reading of like entering an agreement between the Park Board and the City of Minneapolis, and then part of me is like, oh, man, that's the devil's in the details on that. So are we going to be getting detail, I mean, is that something that's already been completely detailed of what that looks like and how we're going to, that's what we're figuring out right in this exact moment, correct? Or no, or are they going to be further down the line?
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Thompson. It's a great question. So the key details that outline the partnership and roles and responsibilities are all inclusive within that document, and really, it's a point in time for us to be able to formalize that partnership to allow the future segments of work to continue to move forward. And I would also reference Council Race if there's anything additional that you'd like to add regarding the contract.
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Thompson, we're looking extremely carefully at this agreement, and we feel comfortable recommending to the Board that what the staff is proposing and what obligations the city has and which obligations we have have been thoroughly vetted, and I believe the Park Board's interests are protected, as are the city's.
That's good to hear. Yeah, I mean, I'm learning about this from being a resident. I've talked with Council Member Vitah, former commissioner. I've met with agencies who live up there and then being on the MWMO Board, and I have to just, I cannot give more kudos to the people who are working on this because it is so complicated and there are so many details. So thank you for your work on this. That's been.
Thank you, Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Protem Smith. Earlier in the presentation, you had mentioned that the Parkway was going to be built to our standards. Our Parkway's are not built for heavy truck traffic, and since this is the only roadway in this location, will the city be building the roadway in such a way that it can survive that sort of heavy traffic on it? Or are we going to have this be the same as all of our other Parkway's and then we're going to be stuck having to fix something because it was built and designed for different traffic than it's actually enduring?
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Musich, thank you for the question. So yes, the Parkway will have specialized section to accommodate the segments where we know there would be truck traffic traveling, and so the Public Works Department has worked to detail and design that section to accommodate that traffic. I would also add that in the longer term, we don't anticipate trucks utilizing the Parkway Road as a throughway, but we do know that there are certain instances in which trucks will be needing to use the road in the short term, and that is being accommodated for in the design and construction.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that. Fantastic. Thank you so much for that additional information. That was all my questions.
Thank you. President Forni.
Thank you, President Protem, for a second time. I think this is a really important agreement that we're going into. Your presentation, can you make copies of it and teach one of us? I think it's really critical. This is a big, big, huge step.
Commissioner, or Council Rice?
If I could make a quick comment, because it's come up, and I think something that President Forni said, this is very significant. The city is going to, by this agreement, convey 19 and a half acres of land on the river to the park board. And I think, question Commissioner Minz asked about when was the last time something like this happened? It was 30 years ago or more when the, what is now CPAD, I think it was maybe CPAD at the time donated to the park board, the land between Plymouth Avenue and the Burlington Northern Site for that parkway. It is a very complicated agreement. Ms. Aldrich has done a good job. Kate Lammers before her worked on this for a long time on the staff. Mr. Swenson has, and Mr. Schroeder's planning department's done work on it. There are considerations in it. It's a long elongated site. There's a lot that the city wants to pack onto it. But the city's been a very good partner, and they are putting the money up. And that's a big, big addition to the system that you're voting on tonight. Along the river, it's over a mile, isn't it? That's quite an accomplishment.
All right. Yeah, that was a lot. So we are moving forward with all those in favor of Resolution 2022-262. Please say aye.
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 Is it a roll call vote? Is it a roll call vote?
Yes.
Will you please call? Yes. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Commissioner Musich?
Aye.
Commissioner Minz?
Aye.
Commissioner Alper?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet?
Aye.
President Protem Smith?
Aye.
President Forni?
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent. That passes.
That passes. And...
I'll move Resolution 2022-281, Resolution Suspending the COVID-19 Testing and Proof of Vaccination Policy and Granting the Superintendent the Authority to reinstate it if certain thresholds are met that indicate its reinstatement is necessary to protect the health and safety of NPRB employees, park visitors, and individuals performing services for the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That passes.
I'll move Resolution D-2022-62, Design and Coordination Update of Hennepin County's Hennepin and First Roadway Improvement Project, Including a Segment of the East Bank Trail on Main Street Between First Avenue Northeast and Hennepin Avenue Northeast, a Part of the Central Mississippi Riverfront Regional Park.
We need a second?
President Protem Smith, this is actually a discussion item. So you don't need to, you don't need to move it. You won't need to take an action on it. So...
We do have to take an action?
You do not have to take an action on it.
Oh, okay.
And just as point of reference, under new business, there are also two items that start with a D. Those two are also discussion items versus in our resolution.
Thank you.
Little clarity there.
Discussion items. So I think we have Carrie here for presentation.
Good evening, President Protem Smith, Commissioners. We're here tonight to give you an update on an exciting link, a missing link on the East Bank Trail between Hennepin and First that's been in the works for a number of years. It was identified during the Central Riverfront Master Planning Process. We've informally referred to it, and in the plan, it's referred to as the SEEM. And I'm happy to say that we've been able to collaborate with Hennepin County on implementing this trail gap through a larger roadway project that has been underway, that the county has been leading for a couple of years. So we had an agreement. So quickly, here is the geography, and then I'll go into sort of the background of how we've been working with the county and the next steps. And our goal tonight is just to bring you up to speed on this multi-year collaboration, because in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing a few agreements before you. And just want to make sure that any questions that might be coming up about design or coordination are sort of on top of before we bring more formalized decision points to you. So thank you for your time tonight. So the SEEM connection is represented here. This is a page from the Central Riverfront Master Plan adopted by us and by Met Council, and identifies there between Hennepin and First, a missing link of trails on the riverside. That's what it was proposed to be, and that's what it will be here in a couple of years. So to date, we have been participating in the PMT or the TAC on this Hennepin County roadway project, which is typical with park board staff will involve, you know, we're involved in these sort of design discussions. And we found a really great opportunity to bring the SEEM into this roadway project. And thanks to staff like Josh Potter, who's here with me tonight, transportation engineer with Hennepin County, we are able to fold the SEEM, implementation of the SEEM into this process. The project has been underway since 2020. And in 2021, the county agreed to bring, again, the SEEM in. We developed an agreement that said, we'll bring our funding to the table to do design and construction. And that was our first agreement that was brought to in 2021. It was approved by our board and by Hennepin County. We had allocated approximately $500,000 to the project in our CIP through park dedication fees. A lot of support from the community for this and the use of park dedication fees to fill this important trail gap. And we've had ongoing coordination on several fronts with the larger roadway project, including our brist reviewing design plans and really working on tree preservation and identifying tree varieties for the larger roadway project. So as I mentioned, there'll be a few decision points coming forward to you in the next couple of months. And that's why we're here tonight, is just to make sure the design, you know, you're aware of the design and the coordination, the ongoing coordination. So we will be, there is a 4F process that is underway. We anticipate a temporary occupancy determination, and we will likely bring that to you for concurrence in winter of 2023. We also are developing a joint powers agreement with the county for construction operations and maintenance of the trail. And it's proposed that park board would operate and maintain the trail. County, you know, basically, there's some roadway that is county roadway that is becoming trail, which is great, great for all parties, and hopefully for the community as well. So we will bring this to you also in winter of 2023. And then construction is planned for 2024. So at this point, I'm going to invite Josh Potter up to give a little bit of an overview of the project as a whole, and then the SEEM design. And thanks again to the county and Josh for being great collaborators on this.
Thank you, Carrie, and good evening to the park board, President Protem Smith, and commissioners. So we'll just give an overview of the project, and of course, have time for discussion. So the project area stretches all the way to 8th Street, down to the riverfront at Main Street, along Hennepin and First Avenue. So we know that certainly this is a gateway to Northeast Minneapolis, as well, people going to and from downtown, as well as moving along the river. Certainly an intersection of just various needs, various residents, businesses, certainly recreational purposes, very sensitive from an environmental standpoint as well. So the current project is a federally funded bikeway project. Funds were obtained from the Metropolitan Council back in 2018. The scope is focused on bikeways, pedestrian accessibility, and ADA improvements, as well as replacing the stoplights in the corridor. One key component of this project, it is not a reconstruction. So that means in this case, it is a retrofit. We are retrofitting in these bike lanes, as well as these ADA improvements in the corridor. So just talking about project schedule, we just recently, in August, received city council layout approval. And so we've completed the planning process. The planning process consisted of talking to the public about existing conditions in the area, so really hearing what people had to share and say. And then from there, developing concepts, and we'll get into the concepts shortly here, and then recommending a preferred alternative, which was approved in August. The next steps are getting into that detailed design here in the latter part of 2022 into 2023, with the project to be bid in the fall of 2023, and construction scheduled and anticipated for one year about spring 2024 through fall 2024. The focus being on getting in and out in one construction season. Really, so just want to hit the project goals here. Really a focus on safety. We know certainly, these are busy streets. So really a focus on trying to improve, these are very vehicle oriented streets. And so trying to improve safety for all users, really that multimodal aspect, focusing on transit, bikes and pedestrians, as well as safety for those in vehicles. Active living, this is a key gap, as well in the East Bank Trail, as well as in the overall bikeway network in the city. And then as well as continuing to support the businesses and the residents and the community in the area. Just wanted to briefly go over engagement. We started engagement back in fall of 2020 and have continued engagement since. We have had quite a robust engagement effort, ranging from neighborhood meetings to door-to-door meeting with businesses, as well as we're continuing engagement, doing various pop-up events, and attending various community events to talk about the project and hear from people further. Just wanted to go over some high level themes of what we've heard, really that safety and accessibility. We've heard certainly some challenges in this neighborhood. As noted, these streets, these streets were built and last rebuilt in the 70s. At that time, very vehicle oriented. We're trying to move away from that and move more towards the safety of all users. The active living, certainly people want to continue to bike, use transit, walk. There's, this area has a lot of development. So focusing on how are we serving that development? We know this area, it's pretty rare that you don't see a construction crane or construction vehicles working on some type of development in this area. Streetscape, really a focus on, this is a very, I'll say, hardscaped corridor. So there's not a lot of trees, there's not a lot of green. So really a focus we're looking at as a part of this project is freeing up and opening up space for green infrastructure, for stormwater treatment, as well as trees, and really trying to get a robust green corridor. And then, of course, supporting the businesses, and as well, we have heard about, of course, a very active area. So we have heard about parking as well. Just wanted to go briefly over the two concepts that were introduced last fall. The first concept is focused on adding a bikeway on the right side of Hennepin and First Avenue. Concept one was a buffered bike lane. So that was a bike lane just separated by some paint on the street. I will note as well that three travel lanes remain in the corridor. Concept two, which is the preferred concept, and the concept that the project team is moving forward with, reduces the number of general purpose lanes down to true travel lanes, with the focus of the third travel lane being for transit. This will be, this is a very heavily used transit corridor. It is a future BRT corridor with Metro Transit E-line, as well as a future planned BRT corridor with Johnson-Lindale planned in the early 2030s. The operations of those transit lanes are still being worked through by the project team and to be determined in, as the project team progresses through this detailed design. The other piece, want to note, is concept two has curb separated bike lanes. So that's certainly something from an all ages and abilities network that project staff identified and heard about from the public, that desire, of course, improving safety, as well as comfort for those using those facilities. Just wanted to pull up a visualization of that concept here, showing that transit lane, as well as that bike lane. The concept here, I will note, we are still working through identifying exact locations for trees and greening. So this concept, we would expect to see in the future, more greening as the design progresses. Talking about the SEEM connection here, so this, of course, along Main Street between Hennepin and First Avenue. So here, recognizing ecologically the importance of the river corridor, what is being done here is narrowing Main Street, thus to fit in the new East Bank Trail. Want to point out, too, that there is space between the street and the trail where we've identified tree plantings, as well as lighting opportunities there, too. Just getting into a little bit more detail, so certainly right now, as you can see here to the right, that is, of course, St. Anthony Main to the left. We're getting towards the railroad corridor there and along the riverfront. And so here, we just wanted to point out the routing of users. Certainly, there's the existing trail that we are connecting in, I'll say, on the south or on the south side of Hennepin Avenue, and then on the north side of Hennepin Avenue, connecting back into the existing shoulders and bike lanes for bikers, as well as the existing sidewalks. Kind of some key components I'm going to point out here as well is at First and Main Street, there is a slip right turn lane. That is being removed. That is identified as a safety issue, and so making it better for pedestrians and bikers. Just want to point out a little bit more details here at the Main and Hennepin Avenue intersection. We're retaining some, we're retaining a median to help with pedestrian crossings across Main Street. As well as here, just wanted to show the trail configuration along the riverfront. As you can see here, there's pictures identified of possible tree locations, as well as that lighting is shown along Main Street here. And then at Main and First, already pointing out the removal of that separated right turn lane. Here, in the future, we are tying into what we hope, what we are calling an interim condition. So right now, Main Street, that trail does not continue along Main Street, but an identified priority, of course, for park board, City of Minneapolis, as well as Hennepin County, is in the future. And there was a study done over the last few years identifying more or less a two-way bikeway and trail along the riverside of Main Street to make that connection up to BF Nelson Park and further up along Main Street and Marshall. Lastly, project context, my information's here. Want to thank Carrie, of course, for introing early on and open to discussion.
Do we have any questions? President Forni?
Thank you, President Protem Smith. Carrie, thank you for the initial comments. Do I understand that who is, who is to do the continuing maintenance? Is that us?
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Forni, President Forni, thank you for the question. Correct. The details of operations and maintenance are still being finalized. And that's what we'll bring in agreement before you this winter to look at that more closely. But the plan is for us to plow and mow strip, the strip for park board to maintain, sort of do the seasonal operations of the trail, the daily maintenance of that trail. of do the seasonal operations of the trail, the daily maintenance of that trail.
As well as asphalt?
Capital improvements, so capital improvements, I think, are part of the conversation. Thank you for the clarification. But the, my understanding is that, at this time, Park Board would also be responsible for asphalt and for the pavement of the trail.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minz.
So, if we went back to like the previous slide there, so what is the biggest barrier to preventing that connection to BF Nelson Park? I mean, it's just not a part of this because it's not a city project. But what is the biggest, what is our barrier to completing that portion that we know of right now?
Yeah, President Protem Smith and Commissioner Minz. At this time, certainly, the railroad bridge that exists today there is an item to work through. At this time, due to the project limits and the federal funds we're limited by or limit, we're basically limited in geographic area based on the federal funds for this project. And so, based on the funding available, as well as those federal funds, at this time, identified to tie in to Main Street and address those limits in the future, knowing that that study along Main Street had identified along Main Street and Marshall up to Lowry Avenue, further work.
So, can I, can I ask another, so this, this project is not actually, we're avoiding any railroad discussion there, right? Is that what's happening?
At this time, yes.
And President Protem Smith, Commissioner Minz, I'm also just add that there is a sidewalk, so pedestrians will be able to continue upriver on the riverside of the road. So, there is an existing sidewalk, where there was no existing sidewalk, where the official seam section is between Hennepin and First. So, it's a, it's a, considered a shared-use, multi-use trail, so both pedestrians and cyclists will be using the segment and could dismount their bike and walk on the sidewalk and get into the park, or cross the road and take Marshall up.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See, no more lights. We will move forward. We need a motion for?
No. Onto the Resolution 2022-282, Resolution Ordering Hearing to Consider Assessing Certain Properties to Defray the Cost of Removing Disease Trees from Private Property During 2021 to 2022.
Any discussion? Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you so much, President Protem Smith. I'm just, I've heard from some community members about this regarding a lot of homeowners on the north side, just, it's just, there's a lot of extra cost. We already talked about budget and that kind of thing that a lot of people are facing. And I'm just wondering if we have any information or any sort of presentation about what that might look like from, I mean, all property owners, but I'm specifically asking about some of the northside residents that I, I know.
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Thompson, I do have some information to share with you this evening. Julie Wiseman, the Finance Director here at the Park Board. So, so the Park Board has authority to condemn and remove diseased or infested trees from private properties within the City of Minneapolis, and it's provided for through state statute as well as MPRB Code of Ordinances. Again, the process is the Forest Street Department will mark the tree for removal, the property owner is notified. Property owners have the option to remove the tree themselves or have the MPRB contract for the tree removal. If the property owner doesn't remove the tree by the deadline provided, the MPRB will assign the tree to a contractor. Once the tree is verified, removed, the contractor has been paid for removal. That's when the MPRB Finance Department starts their process, and we notify the property owner with the first billing letter. Included in that first billing letter is information about financial hardship options that are available to the property owners during this property. So, the property owner can pay the tree removal in full at the time, they can make partial payments and levy a smaller dollar amount, or they can pay nothing, and the unpaid balance is then levied as a special assessment against their property. It's collected through Hennepin County, and there's a 3% interest factor that's added. We have two financial hardship options that are available. The first one, the Special Assessment Deferral Program, has been available for many years. It mirrors the Special Assessment Deferral Program that the City of Minneapolis offers, and it has the same criteria to qualify. And so, and that criteria is shown here. It is a deferral, so it is still a lien against the property, but the property owner doesn't pay for the tree removal until such time as either they sell their home or the homestead status disappears, or the hardship status disappears. We heard a lot, especially during the COVID pandemic, that, that levying the assessment over a five-year period, which is our normal assessment process for this type of removal, was still a hardship for a lot of property owners. So, in October of 2021, we brought a resolution forward to the board, which they approved, and they added a second financial hardship option that's available to all homestead property owners. In this case, instead of levying the assessment over five years, they can levy the assessment over 10 years. They do pay more in interest over that time period, but for some individuals, it makes it easier to handle within their mortgage payment or their direct payment to Hennepin County, depending on how their property taxes are paid. Along with these two options, we also will waive the administrative fee that's charged for that work. And that's just, it's an $80 administrative fee. So, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a whole lot, but it's another option that we're able to offer property owners. Currently, with the tree assessments this year, largely, they're due to the Emerald Ashbore. Jeremy Baric is here to answer some additional questions about that. But it is impacting the north side this year at a higher level than on other parts of the city, as Emerald Ashbore infestation has moved through our city east to west and north to south. So, previous years were in other parts of the city, and this year, it's hitting the north side more. So, I have heard from individuals, just like we reported to the board last year, there's individuals who are just new property owners, and this is a surprise to them. We have elderly property owners, which we're hearing is a hardship. And we have other, like neighborhood associations, the Harrison Neighborhood Association has gotten involved and is assisting some property owners with some assistance for payments. So, there's a lot of communication and conversation that's going around with this year's tree levy.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up question, probably for Assistant Superintendent Baric, regarding our, our criteria for how things get removed? And, yeah, just so I'm informed myself. So, I'd like to say hello to Superintendent Bangora, I see you over there now.
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Thompson, your question is the criteria of when a tree is removed?
I'll just give an example that there were, someone was critiquing, it seemed like we have a perfectly healthy tree, why is the Park Board making us take it down? So, I'm, and that's anecdotal, but so I'm curious if I can just, how, how is our Forest Street Department making those determinations?
So, we have tree inspectors, and these are arborists that are assigned into the role of street tree inspectors through their daily operations of inspecting work requests or service requests and assigning work orders. They're doing windshield surveys of the community. You know, again, Dutch elm disease, you see the yellow flagging of the elm. With Emerald Ashbore, you're going to see some crown dieback and suckering. With both things, there is a threshold where you really, you can't save it. There are chemical treatments, and that's one of the reasons, if you look in like northeast with the dots, that Neighborhood Association did invest in insecticides to protect the ash and phase the removal over, over time. And so, when you get into it, you see the flagging, it becomes a professional judgment call. They are state, State Department of Agriculture certified tree inspectors, and it becomes a professional judgment call on how far along is the tree. And again, you could inject, the likelihood of success varies. And again, there's a threshold where basically after a third, once you have a third of the dieback, it's not, it's not likely that anything will, will work in preventing a further spread and ultimate decline.
Can I just, for the record, ask, what, what is, what are the ramifications if we don't take down these trees, to homeowners, to citizens? Like, what does that look like?
Yeah. The Tree Advisory Committee shared a photo of a neighboring suburb, and if you go south on Nicollet or France, and you get into some of the southern suburbs that have not been as active in managing the disease, you can see the effects of it, large standing dead trees. Ash trees in particular are fairly brittle wood, meaning they start to fall apart pretty quick. So, a large dead-standing ash tree will start to peel off, break off in storms, and then you have an elevated risk of property damage, life and safety in some cases, depending on the location. And that, that was one of the reasons, as I understand it, it was before my time, but that's one of the reasons why the Park Board chose the remove-and-replace option, was given the nature of ash and how brittle they are and how, how the elevated risk would play out, we felt it was better to just remove trees and replace them, diversify the urban forest. We've completed that eight-year project on the parkway, the right-of-ways and in the parks, but now, we're dealing with a private. And we are seeing an exponential increase in the number of privately condemned trees. And that's because a lot of these ash, you know, ash were a pretty low-cost tree back in the 70s to replace the elms. And so, for a pretty low fee, you could get another fast-growing tree that did really well in an urban environment, silver maples and ash. And unfortunately, we committed the same mistake with ash that we did with elm, and we created a dense population of ash that are being wiped out by an invasive pest. So, hope that helps.
Yes, it does. Thank, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
All right. Commissioner Alper.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say major kudos on the fast-action map work this afternoon for putting this together. So, thank you to Philip, and I can never say your last name, so maybe, maybe that's my question. Philip, how do you, how do you say your?
Patti Yandi.
I'll work on that.
Patti Yandi.
And, you know, I was just thinking about this a little bit more. So, is it up to the homeowner to replace the tree? The tree comes down, we take the tree down, we charge them, we assess them a fee, and then what? And?
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Alper. Yeah, once the tree is gone, I mean, it's private property. We can't, we can't require the replacement of a tree, and it's, yeah, it's on them.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So, you're, you're confirming what I thought, that it's on them, and I'm guessing they're probably thinking, whoa, I just spent, I don't, I don't know how much on tree removal. And I'm just thinking about our goals, wondering here if, if not now, just wanted to bring up the idea that maybe in the future, that we say, hey, we're charging you for taking down your tree, but here's a little carrot, here's, you know, here's a coupon for a free tree. I don't know, or, you know, giving them some resources. I just, I just, I want to put, put out that idea out there. Just because we haven't done it before doesn't mean we can't in the future.
I think if, President Protem Smith, the, the City Health Department does have a tree giveaway and a significantly reduced-cost private tree program that they run every spring, where homeowners can get a replacement tree.
Can I follow up to that? So, does our assessment letter include information on that program?
Julie's telling me no.
Okay.
Something we can check into.
That seems like a great opportunity. Thanks.
Commissioner Mucinich, I know you want to respond.
Thank you. I just was going to add a little bit of additional information. Part of the MTAC presentation that was given to the City Council, I think today, or maybe yesterday, it doesn't matter, I suppose, they did recommend that the tree program be modified to prioritize people that are losing trees to disease or invasive pests, so that those folks would have first dibs on those trees and that they'd be notified of their ability to do that. So, while this is not under the purview necessarily, the replacement of the tree is not necessarily under the purview of the Park Board, because it is private property and that's really more the realm of the City Council, the MTAC has encouraged that there be more done to help replace these trees that are losing on private property, because as those of you that watch Fox News saw last night, a large portion of the public, a large portion of the urban forest exists on private property. So, yeah, anything we can do to encourage our colleagues to do more to fund that program of trees for private property, as well as connect people that are losing trees that are mature to that program, I think, is going to be helpful.
Thanks.
May I, may I ask a question?
You may.
But who sends the assessment letter? Is it the city or is it the Park Board?
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Alper, it is the Park Board Finance Department that sends the assessment billing letter.
Thank you. Commissioner Benny.
Thank you, thank you, President Protem Smith. I actually have a question for you, and that would be, I'm not even sure what we're, what the resolution does, though, like what's the nuts and bolts here? So, we're ordering a hearing, so what are the next steps, if you would?
Sure. President Protem Smith and Commissioner Benny, this orders the public hearing, and then at the public hearing, it's the property owner's ability to address the board if there's any remaining issues with the levying or the removal of their tree, if they have a, you know, a request from the board. So, it's their opportunity to speak to the board publicly regarding the tree assessment before it is levied.
I see. So, it's like when the city does the property tax public hearing. So, we don't know at this time. It could be one person that shows up, it could be 100, because there were, I think, a lot of trees, private trees that were assessed and tagged these last months. So, that's right, right? It could be a bunch of people. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Minz.
How many total properties was it?
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Minz, the current pending assessment list is just over 430. is just over 430 trees. That doesn't mean that's how many will be levied. Once you've called the public hearing, then I send a second billing letter with the notice of public hearing and the deadline by which they need to pay the tree in full. And we'll receive a lot of payments, and a lot of those pending assessments will be paid and not be levied. So I can't tell you exactly how many will be on the levied assessment list yet.
And then, and then what I'm hearing is it's going to impact, it's impacting the North Side quite a bit more than other parts of the city, which, I mean, let's be honest, this is like another tax that's coming on their homes. So what I'm wondering, I, I've gotten a few questions about this in my district around, like, us sending out a billing notice or an estimate and then coming back, and then it's a little bit, it's higher than what they anticipated. So do the property owners have an opportunity to get their own service? And then what is our accountability in response to if we tell them it's going to be a certain amount and then it turns out being a lot more or a significant amount more? What's our accountability there? I don't know. Has that, it's happened in my district at least.
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Minz. I believe what you're speaking to is, we, we do a tremendous amount of customer service around this. I've been a, early in my career, I was a tree inspector in Hutchinson, Savage, and Eagan. And it's just a notice back then, it was just a notice, and it was on the homeowner to figure it out. We do the initial notice, and we give them time to, they can find their own tree contractor to then have the tree removed and take care of it within a timeframe, and then it's just done, and that's that. Otherwise, there's the option where we actually send out, we put out a contract to tree services for these removals. So you end up with multiple contractors competing. We get pricing, that's bulk pricing, so to speak. They know they're going to get a number of removals with this. So you get, you get bulk pricing. And then as the homeowner, if they elect to have us do it, we get three bids. We actually take care of that whole process where the contractors are notified, we need three bids at this house or this property. They come back, we, we share those bids with the homeowner and say, this is what we got back. We will, we will do everything in our power to get the lowest bid to your home to execute the removal. However, with booking and scheduling, et cetera, it may be one or the other, one of the other two companies that bid for the project. And there is another instance to, so with that bulk pricing, that's kind of a generic, like, easy access, whack it, stack it, and haul it away kind of a thing. But you can get into specials where it's, the access is difficult or limited, and that complicates things then, too. So the three companies come out, and it's, it's capitalism. It's who can come up with the most creative, cost-effective way to make the removal happen, and then that's how the pricing can vary. I can, as personally speaking, I had an ash tree in my backyard. We ran the course with this, and when I got private bids, it was $4,800 to do the tree. And in the end, we ended up, the, the tree company that did the work did it for $2,400 and used a machine that I'd only seen in traditional forestry, and they're the only company that has one. But they were able to do the removal in a matter of like two hours with four guys.
Through the park board?
Through the park board.
Okay.
And so that's how the pricing can vary. There's some companies that have equipment that allows them to do it quicker with fewer people. Other companies, you know, it's rope and saddle, tougher access, higher cost.
And you said there's a lot of customer service associated with this. Do we, do we get feedback from the homeowners around how we did on that customer service? Are, like, are most of our customers satisfied regarding that? And I just hear about the ones that aren't satisfied?
I, I think it follows that general rule of life where we, we don't hear from the people who are really satisfied, except for a few, and then we always hear from the dissatisfied.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you so much, President Protem Smith. I, I do have another question regarding finance, and I think I know the answer, but I just am going to ask anyway. Regarding specifically in the North Side and property values, obviously, the cost of removing a tree depends on the size and scope of the tree, not the location of the tree or the property value that it lies on. So is there any sort of program? I know we defer costs and we allow this to go on. Is there any sort of a program that, that just says, I mean, if this were on our, if this were in our park, we would just take care of it, right? Is there anything that says people could apply for some sort of financial hardship where it becomes a reduction in that, that cost? I mean, I think, I mean, the, we run the gamut of things that we see, just even in the parks, and I know the city even more so in terms of costs, and, and they're all linked of housing and, sorry, I know I'm beeping. Do we have, is there anything like that? Is it even ever been considered? President Protem Smith and Commissioner Thompson, there is not anything that currently exists for that. By state law, it is the property owner's responsibility to pay for the tree removal. I, again, with all the customer service that we try to provide, we can't cover every option, but I've had property owners that have gone, that are veterans and have gone to the VA and received loans to help defray the cost of the tree. Again, we have some neighborhood organizations that are trying to step in and help defray the cost of the trees, but the park board does not have the ability to do that at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I'm curious if the administrative fee that we charge of $80 covers all this great customer service.
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Schaefer, the admin fee really supports the actual software and maintenance and upkeep of the software application and billing that we do. It's really the general fund that funds the finance staff that do this program and also funds the forestry staff that provide this program.
Thank you. That shows our significant commitment to this process that maybe mirrors what we're asking the public to contribute in some ways. So thank you. And then I just had one other comment about following up with planting of trees. You know, maybe that's something to think of our new forestry outreach coordinator, you know, as a follow-up. Not that we're going to spend all of our money, but if we were to pick between investing our staff in getting trees cut down in a customer service-friendly way versus investing our staff towards replanting those that have to come out, I think we would want to weigh on the replanting side and, and maybe Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Baric, you have a comment?
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Schaefer. What I would say about the customer service, I think the reason we do that is because if we act fast, we prevent the spread. And so there is, while the, the fee may not recover all the costs associated with it, it's in our best interest to address it as soon as possible. And there's been research that's shown, like, the community, Minneapolis has more elms than St. Paul because, no, other way, no.
Ash, you mean?
Yeah. No, elms. There's, there's been studies with the elm where this, the communities that, that assisted homeowners and made it easy to remove the diseased elms were able to preserve their elm trees in a greater number than the communities that kind of just put it on the people and enforced it. So that's, that's our drive for the customer service piece. But agree with, you know, I think growing canopy starts with preservation rather than just planting, because the canopy that's here is, is going to stay here for a long time, and we have to wait for those other trees to grow, so.
Okay. Thank you.
President Forni.
Thank you, Protem, President Smith. First of all, I really appreciate all the questions everybody's asking on this. This is something that will come before us every year. And I don't know, I only have eight years to, but what, two, three people maybe come to our hearings? Is that about it? Okay. We may be getting more according to what we're saying, you know, with particularly North Minneapolis with the ash trees. So there might be more. So I just want you to know that historically, it hasn't been that much. But this is really, to me, this is a really huge issue. How do we encourage, incentivize whatever homeowners planting trees, caring for trees? This is a huge, huge, huge issue. You've all seen the Star Tribune's wonderful series about the tree canopy and how can we encourage not just our homeowners, but more importantly, the landlords? That's the really, really, really critical one. So I, I encourage all of us, you know, to, wherever we can influence, or whether or not it's our, our state representatives, or it's our city council, whatever, this is a really significant problem. And however, we can be proactive in it and play a role in encouraging people to replant and nourish, you know, the trees is, is so vital. So thank you, though, for the robust discussion. I appreciate it.
Seeing no more lights. All those in favor of resolution 2022-282, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. That carries. Moving on, we have a discussion item. Discussion item 2022-47, and I think we have a presentation by James Schaefer for the monthly climate resiliency discussion item, Forests in Cities Cooling Study.
And Director Pilger.
Oh, and Director Deb Pilger and NPRB participation. Thank you.
And good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight with our Natural Resources Supervisor, James Schaefer, to share some exciting information with you about a national consortium that we are participating in called Forests in Cities. And we also want to provide you with an overview about an important climate study that is being conducted within this Forests in Cities Consortium. So Forests in Cities, or FIC, is a program that was created by the Natural Areas Conservancy out of New York City in 2019. And their mission is shown on the screen here to promote and advance healthy forested natural areas in cities across America through science, management, partnership, and communications. So this Forests in Cities partnership is currently with teams from 17 metro regions across the United States, and it started out as a group of 12 teams back in 2019. Partners include nonprofits, governments, academics, and even some private contractors. And we joined as a representative for the Twin Cities Metro Area in 2019 along with Mississippi Park Connection. And they are still involved in this work also. The work was kicked off in 2019 with a convening in New York City. This was sponsored by the Natural Areas Conservancy, and it was an invite-only national workshop that we were able to participate in. And all of the participants presented case studies at this convening that involved their professional work, and we participated in this small-scale conference, and we do continue to participate within the consortium. It's really been a great professional network for us. We are collaborating on national work groups with them. They've created several resources. There are some online lab libraries, excuse me. And there's going to be a second convening coming up in Seattle this fall, and we'll also be attending. There are some of the new members that have joined since 2019, and we'll be learning more about them and their background. They'll be presenting their case studies. We'll be able to reconnect with these folks that we've been working with the last few years on a screen, and we'll be seeing what some of the newer resources are that are developed for the network. And then one of the big things there also is this 2022 convening is going to discuss the initial findings of the cooling study that James is going to present to you tonight. So James will now give you an overview of this project and talk about how we're participating in it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Deb. Thanks, Commissioners. So continuing on with the details of this cooling study that we're participating in. The summer of 2021 was the hottest on record in the contiguous U.S. with extreme heat now being a leading cause, or the leading cause of weather-related deaths across the country. In general, cities are documented to be about 2 to 10 degrees warmer than rural areas, and this increases the risks to health and well-being of citizens in rural areas. Right now, about 80% of the U.S. population lives in urban areas, and that's projected to increase to about 89% in, by about 2050. So increasing the urban tree canopy cover by planting and maintaining trees is associated with multiple positive outcomes, including the reduction of the urban heat island effect. Magnitude of these benefits has not really been well documented, though, or described across different types of urban tree canopy, including between, for example, street trees versus forested natural areas. Documenting and quantifying the benefits of these different tree canopies is going to be a major type, or a major goal of this cooling study and a major aim of both parts that we'll be discussing here tonight. Research by the Natural Areas Conservancy found that the coolest areas in New York City are comprised nearly 100% of natural areas. In the case of their preliminary study, these natural areas encompassed forests, grasslands, and in their case, because it was out on the East Coast, salt marshes. Natural areas were found to be, on average, 4 to 6 degrees cooler than street trees and landscaped park trees. So even the benefits you're seeing with landscape trees and street trees, natural areas even have an additional benefit beyond that. Their preliminary results also suggest that healthy forests may have a larger cooling benefit than those that are ecologically degraded. Expanding on the efforts conducted by the Natural Areas Conservancy in 2021, a dozen U.S. cities, the, the first group of 12 that joined the Natural Areas Conservancy in the Forests in Cities Network, are joining us all in the research with a cross-country study focusing on clarifying the role urban natural areas, in particular forested natural areas, play in cooling cities. This study will explore the differences in temperature across natural and built landscapes using satellite data, and I'll show you a picture of that here shortly. And we'll additionally explore if ecosystems' health influences air temperature in forested natural areas by deploying temperature sensors in forests across the country. So this is a map of the current 12 that are participating in this cooling study in 2022. This is the initial 12 cities that were part of the network. Let's see, we have a pretty good distribution across the country. For the cooling study itself, the main goal here is to determine the cooling benefits of various landcover types in urban, urban areas. So the way this is divided is in three larger categories. You've got your built areas, these are areas that are largely pavement, buildings, roads, basically anything that's impervious and not natural surfaces. You have maintained areas. These are areas that are things like mowed turf, other green spaces and natural areas. So that would include things like city parks that are largely turf but with scattered trees, anything that isn't necessarily a natural area. And then finally, natural areas, and this includes things like prairies, wetlands, and So for the first part of this study, New York City did kind of an initial, initial run of what they wanted to do. And what this is a, this map shows a heat anomaly data map in New York City. So what this is actually showing you is the difference in average temperature, very specifically, versus the overall area totally. So where you see red spots, that means that there was a larger heat anomaly. Where you see blue spots, that means it was, on average, cooler than the regional average. This data was then overlaid against landcover type data. So the areas that we're talking about before, your built, your maintained, and your natural areas, to see if there was a correlation between these different types of landcover versus the heat anomaly data. versus the heat anomaly data. As an initial piece of the results, you can see in the gray areas here, that's going to be your more built areas. The light green are going to be your, kind of the aggregate of your landscaped areas. And the dark green is the aggregate of your natural vegetation types. So as you can see, the built areas all trended very heavily towards higher heat anomalies. The, kind of the turf and green space that isn't natural areas mostly tended slightly cooler, but a little more towards the average regionally. And the natural areas trended very heavily towards lower heat anomalies. So overall, what this means is that natural areas are the coolest places in the city. They found an average of 4 to 6 degrees cooler than landscaped vegetation. The initial data from the 2021 study suggested, but they weren't really able to, they weren't able to quantify it, and that's going to get to a part two of this study here. But it suggested that the healthier the natural area, the greater the benefit of cooling that was received. So in part two, they designed a protocol to try to test this as well. So we'll go over that shortly. Yeah, so after the initial result from this New York City team, the rest of the 12 groups convened here for 2022 to send out some of our data and kind of conglomerate it so that we can participate in this study. For our piece, we digitized, or we were able to use the data from the Phase II Natural Areas Plan to submit 99 sites for inclusion in this cooling study and totaling an approximate of about 2.6 thousand acres. Very briefly with this chart here, the gray is going to be your built areas. Pink is long with trees. Light green is open upland, which is, in our case, most often prairie. Orange is forested wetlands. Purple will be tree savannas, and they kind of quantify savanna as anything with 10 to 50% tree canopy cover. Dark green, you're seeing deciduous forests. And in that case, forest is specified as something that's greater than 75% tree canopy. And then brown is deciduous woodlands, and that is kind of in the middle there with a 51 to 75% tree canopy. In addition, as part of Cooling Study Part Two, there were 10 temperature sensors were deployed as part of the cooling study across several areas of the city. Part Two is, does health and quality of forests and natural areas correlate to a greater cooling benefit? Again, this was suggested in the first part that New York City did, but they did not have the actual data to back it up. The way this piece works is that there were three temperature sensors set up in three different regional parks. In this case, we chose Minnehaha Park, Theodore Worth Park, and North Mississippi Park. The three clusters of temperature sensors included a control, which was built or placed in a more built area, usually a tree adjacent to a parking lot, and then two that were placed within natural areas. One was in a area of the natural area that was quantified to be a little more degraded, one that was quantified to be a little more healthy or natural type. The way we determined whether they were healthy or degraded was by these structures. So the vertical structure of the woodland, whether there's a presence of overstory, midstory, and understory trees, invasive ground cover percentage, whether or not it was dominated by invasive species, the number of different native woody species that are present on the site, the proportion of trees and shrubs that are native within the site, percentage of area that is not covered by tree canopy, so tree canopy gaps, the presence of woody regeneration, so finding saplings, seedlings, and germinates, and general tree health, so proportion of dead stems, pest infestation, or crown dieback. Here's an example of one of the rubrics we used. In order to qualify as a healthy site, the site needed to score 17 or above. In order to qualify as a degraded site, it needed to score 14 or below. One of the things we found was that degraded sites, it was kind of a snowballing effect. If you saw, you know, a large incidence of invasives, usually buckthorn in these wooded sites, you would see, you know, overall less species richness, overall less native regeneration, overall less presence of mixed vertical structure. So it was kind of a compounding effect between that all. So it's pretty easy to find sites that really qualified well. This temperature anomaly sensor data will be collected through this fall. I think we're actually going to be trying to take the last bit of data points early next week. And then the findings and data will be a point of discussion when we convene this fall with the overall network. So for results and implications, you know, we're participating in both parts of this study and seeing if the cooling aims to demonstrate the effect that the urban canopy can have and the natural spaces can have on mitigating the urban heat island effect. We also feel that the cooling study may be helpful in informing the NPRBs thinking about how we invest in natural spaces and how this can improve our climate resiliency in total. And with that, is there any other questions?
Commissioner Schaefer?
First of all, thank you so much for, this is a very interesting report. So I appreciate your effort in putting this together. And exciting to hear that you didn't have trouble finding sites that were appropriate to do this study. That's really encouraging. My question, I guess, first is, is there thinking on staff that we can use some of this data to support us as we look at our natural areas, Phase I, Phase II, and the funding that we need to really improve these spaces and take them to the next level? I mean, is this some of the data that we need to help us in our toolkit towards that direction?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Schaefer. Yeah, I think in general, it'll be a good data point. It's really going to depend, I guess, how the data all coalesces at this fall when we see it all. But I think it is helpful information to know that if we're looking to, you know, mitigate the urban heat island effect, if we're trying to make a more resilient community, knowing that the dollars that we put towards natural areas has, you know, a greater effect than certain other things that we could do.
Thank you. Commissioner Binney?
Thank you, President Protem Smith. I just want to say, I was going to basically make a very similar comment to Commissioner Schaefer, so here, here, and that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Commissioner Musi?
Thank you, President Protem Smith. The University of Minnesota recently concluded a heat island study. Are we sharing the data that we're collecting with that team as they continue to seek funding, additional funding to continue that research, as it may help them to, you know, build out their data set a little bit further? I know they focus primarily on the built environment rather than what we're doing, which is the natural environment, but it seems like there's a point of intersection there that we might want to explore.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you, Commissioner Musi. And we've had forestry involved in some of the presentations that have been given over the last couple of years with this work because there is some overlap with our forestry department, and they do work very closely with the University of Minnesota. So we'll be sure to share, especially as we learn this fall, about what people are seeing in the field, what are the field truths that they're finding when they're actually making these observations, and we kind of have the data to support it. So yeah, good suggestion. Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you. It's fascinating work. I look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We have another discussion item, discussion item 2022-60 by Assistant Superintendent Mimi Kell and Jamie Niedornan. Definitely may be butchered in the name, so apologies. I did so with grace.
President Protem Smith and Commissioners, I'd like to introduce my colleagues that are a part of this presentation tonight, the dream team, if you will. Jamie Neldner, Citywide Program Advancement Administrator, and Lyndon Weisswerta, Data Insights Analyst.
Sorry.
You're okay. So we're here to tell you about the past, present, and future efforts in programming processes and how we are working to give staff the tools to perform. Today's topics include a background of the Recreation Division, resources around better use of data, projects, processes, and improvements. I'm going to go over the background. From 2014 to 2018 was the RecQuest Project. It was the result of the last comprehensive plan. It was a community-driven recreation master plan. And that RecQuest work is now part of the new current Parks for All Comprehensive Plan and is included in the area of Recreation Center System Level of Service. In 2021, there was new division structure and organization realignment. The organization realignment included Jamie and Lyndon's positions, along with rethinking the Recreation Division. It included programming priorities such as creating and tracking programs through data, using data to guide performance goals for Recreation Center staff, and standardization and guideline principles were established. Programs are developed and vetted through a process, and then they're reviewed through a data profile which demonstrates enrollment and attendance. Resources are allocated through the Equity Matrix, and programs are audited for accuracy and quality. In 2022, we received $2.6 million to enhance youth programming. This is expanding programming, which is supported by data, using data to guide and support performance goals. Data is a way to share information and demonstrate our performance. And over the next four years, we'll be working on standards and guidelines for performance capacity, evaluation, and enrollment. Here is what we are currently focusing on programming, the six pillars of excellence, if you will. The Spark Studios, youth enrichment through community-focused employment, that is in collaboration with the Environmental Stewardship Department. Nature Programming, also in collaboration with the Environmental Stewardship Department. Cycling, Community Gardening, Intergenerational Centers of Excellence. Now, Lyndon is going to talk about how data has and will continue to support and inform our programming.
So building on where Assistant Superintendent Kell left off, as we move into these pillars and our new comprehensive plan and new performance goals adopted by this board, it becomes very difficult to answer questions about that. For example, if the superintendent asks me what level of capacity our facilities are at, 50%, 80%, it's very difficult to answer. He could ask anybody that question. It would be difficult to answer because we have a lot of staff who know their individual programs, their individual buildings, and their community members walking through their door better than I ever will. But we have a huge system, and there's nobody who knows those stories about every site, every program, every park, and every community in Minneapolis. Then that's where data is going to step in and help try to scale up those stories so we understand it at a system-wide and city-wide scale. What you see on the screen here is just some examples of the tools we're using to do that. And we've been using a lot of these for a long time. What we haven't done a great job of is using them together. If I want to run an in-depth programming profile on a single park with a rec center in it, I have to consult at least three different software tools and probably make about four or five phone calls. That's not really a method that gets feedback to our commissioners, to our executive team, to our leadership and our staff in a way that they can use that feedback because it's not organized, it's not structured, and it's really not accessible, is the biggest problem. So using these systems that we already have and tools we already have, we're starting to fill in the gaps a little bit. And that leads to one of the main roles of the Data Insights Team. And if you're not familiar with the structure of the team, we're centralized in the Planning Division, but each member of the Data Insights Team works with two to three departments around the park board. I work with the Recreation Division as well as Park Police. And we're sharing things on the backend that our individual departments and groups that we work with need from us. So whenever I do a project with the Recreation Division with Jamie and Mimi, I'm also consulting with my team to see if they have data I can bring in or better versions of the data that we've historically relied on. So rather than have five or 10 different ways of doing it, we're developing new standards that cross the organization through the Data Insights Team. And those organization-wide standards are helping us to work together, to collaborate, to stop repeating our mistakes that we've made in the past, and we have, unfortunately. Often, the mistakes weren't mistakes at the time they were made, they're only mistakes in retrospect because it wasn't wrong when we didn't have a standard. We did it 10 different ways because there wasn't one standard. So as we develop those organization standards, we get better at all these other steps we have listed out here. So the Data Insights Team is using each individual project to recommend changes, to data collection, to data storage, to data practices themselves, and moving beyond that into developing standards for things that we've never tried to make consistent. So for a good example, is our almost completed demographic data collection standards, which will be used in registration software. It'll be used in community engagement events by everyone from planning to community connections. And it will help us to bring in data in the future in a way that's already set up to be comparable and useful across projects, across systems, and across various questions asked that we need to answer. In recreation, there are so many different groups that are already doing this in small bits and pieces. And so a lot of the lift of Jamie and myself is to, and many others, I should be clear, is to make it easier for them to do these data collection processes alongside the job they're already doing. Not everyone has to be a data expert, but a lot of this comes down to the culture of the organization, treating the data, the information we gather as valuable, but not something that gets in the way of delivering our services and programs. And that's the, I'm getting up here at a data presentation to talk about cultural change instead of data, but it's because it's equally important to the pretty charts and graphs that we're able to put together at the end of it, as we have to get better at this as an organization. That awareness is helped by putting some quick wins into place using some of our existing data collection processes, and this is a good example. For years, our outdoor supervision teams have been collecting headcount data of people in their parks. They go through several times a day and say, how many people are on the playground, how many at the waiting pool, how many walking on the paths? We've been doing this for years and storing them on nicely organized sheets of paper in binders in 40 or 50 different buildings around the city. And unfortunately, I can't keep track of that. So this existing process, which is very robust, and we have been doing this thousands of times every season, we simply made digital. Now, the data collection, the questions are the same, but the collection method has changed and is more standardized. And as soon as somebody scans the little QR code or clicks on the link and it takes you to a survey form, it shows up in a centralized database. This screenshot was actually taken in June. It says there was 4,700 counts completed. I checked this morning, it says 10,000. And every time that is submitted, the data is already in there, it's already organized, it's accessible, and then can be compared and added into other projects and new initiatives in particular, one of which I'd like to highlight by having Jamie come up here.
Thank you, Lyndon. My name is Jamie Neldner. I'm just going to go into a bit of detail on some of those tools that Assistant Superintendent Kell shared a moment ago. First one is an internal program planning tool that was brought to us when the superintendent returned from his stint in Mecklenburg County. So thank you, Superintendent Bangora. So we started working on this right away in 2019, and we were ready for a rollout in March of 2020. And if you can all remember with me back in March of 2020 what happened, this project obviously was put on pause for about a year. And then we worked with Assistant Superintendent Kell and her wonderful team to add this to the million things that they had on their plate at that moment in time, and we rolled this out last summer of 2021. So the intention behind this is that all of that data that Lyndon mentioned and Mimi mentioned, and we will be talking to death about tonight, is pulled out of our recreation software and packaged into these profiles because, so at the end... Because, so at the end of a programming season, Lyndon and all of his brilliance wraps all that data into these profiles, right? Because the reality is programmers begin working on the next year's season right away. So, we just wrapped up summer. Programming staff across the city are already working on summer 2023. So, this profile is ultimately a snapshot of what happened in their center by age and participation. We have used staff feedback to tweak this throughout the last year-plus, and we have tweaked it every single season. We have identified gaps in data. We've identified opportunities for training with staff. It's really been a success beyond measure. And as a matter of fact, I'll take the opportunity to give Lyndon some props. He joined our project team last year. There were some data analysts that kind of switched roles with the organization, and he converted this. So, you can see here on the left, this very static-looking PDF. He converted it into an interactive dashboard that staff and, you know, programming staff, management staff, directors, et cetera, can interact with and use and tweak. And it's really, really exciting and geeky, and I love it. But, so, our ultimate goal, our ultimate goal is moving toward more quality programs and program performance for the park board. And this tool will tie directly to that 2023-2026 Strategic Direction C. Forgive me for reading, but it is, that direction is to implement quality youth and intergenerational programs. And along with that are those three performance goals based on evaluation, enrollment, and capacity. So, to set some expectation, the capacity performance goal is huge. We're gonna, that's going to be a really big lift for us. We're going to use all four of those years to build that and pilot it and fix it. And we're really going to have to lean on our cohorts, our colleagues at ActiveNet for them to help us build that capacity into our software. Evaluation is self-explanatory. Program satisfaction from our customers. And then enrollment, we'll not only be tracking how folks enroll with us, but are they return customers? Will they re-enroll with us? So, we want to build parameters ultimately around like, how can we tell if a program is successful? Are we filling the spots? Do we need to retire a program that's not performing? Or scale it back from multiple sites? Do we need to expand these programs that people are like, really excited about? So, all of those questions will ultimately be answered. Tool number two, which coincides with that park profile tool I just shared. And this is our community demographics dashboard. So, this was also a static PDF until Lyndon joined us last fall, and he converted this into an interactive map in Power BI, which was huge and fast-tracked our roadmap for this tool exponentially. It was very exciting. I think Mimi can join me in that sentiment. So, this really gives programmers a snapshot of who is in their neighborhood. So, as they're building their suite of programs every season, it illustrates age, race, and any inclusive needs that may be present in their community. It is a usable tool. I want to highlight, this isn't, I know we're focusing on recreation, but this is a usable tool for all programmers in our city as we distribute activities and resources from all of our programming departments and divisions. So, we hope to add more layers. I shouldn't say we hope, we will add more layers to this. It's just a matter of having all of the data talk to, talk to the system and adding that in. We are really excited about that. We have lots of ideas. The programmers are really excited, and they have lots of ideas as well. Lastly, and this one is a bit different, Mimi talked about this a bit. This is more of a, this is a tool that identifies those customer-facing annoyances and errors that live out there in our software. So, this process, it improves access to our customers, obviously, but it also helps with our internal promotion. So, when our communications and marketing department goes into our software to start pushing this information out, it helps improve that content as well. And then generally, you know, data collection, reporting, it improves all of that. So, this used to be a three, this used to happen three times a year and only in the rec division. So, we only audited Recreation Center programs. And it was also a peer-to-peer review. So, colleagues were reviewing each other. So, it was an attempt at quality control, but it didn't allow room for consistency across the city, didn't allow room for skill-building across all of our staff. So, now, all programs, every program, no matter the division, no matter the department, are centrally audited. So, no more peer-to-peer reviews on that same schedule. So, it happens three times a year before customers have access to the data, before they can go in there and dig around and shop for our really cool programs. This audit happens, those corrections are made. And in addition to that, it's, we audit them on a weekly basis because staff are constantly adding new ideas, new programs. They get new funding for a really cool idea, whatever that may look like, right? So, there's significant room for human error in our software. It's super-complex, and so we audit those activities every week as well. So, those audits improve the quality of programming data. It improves how that interface, how customers interface with our data and the activities and where those activities are happening. And it gives customers access to all the really awesome data that lives in our software. And if the slightest error is made, it just, it disconnects the customer's ability to see that stuff. So, new random errors have been identified since we purpose, since we repurposed this tool last year. Lyndon and I were honestly just meeting today. We meet a lot, needless to say, and we were just thinking like, "Oh, my gosh, should we do this differently?" You know, we found this random error that we, that had popped up. And I could go on and on about this stuff. But anyway, if, when those things happen, we just add the variable in the format and audit for those variables as well. So, it has allowed for some really, really important conversations to happen, mutual understanding, mutual learning. Frankly, some of our staff have been using this software for 14 years, and so it's just unveiled so many training opportunities and opportunities for growth. So, I do want to, I do want to be clear, though. These errors that are happening, they are certainly not intentional. Staff are just looking to, you know, communicate to customers. They're looking to, you know, mitigate an issue. But sometimes, there's just a better way to do that from the customer's perspective, and that's what these audits find and correct. So, with that, I'll give it back to Mimi.
So, yeah, I personally want to thank Jamie and Lyndon. They have done a phenomenal job and a lot, a lot of work to make this happen. And the staff is receptive and excited, and it is helping us, you know, plan, plan better and program better and understand our communities better as well as give our story, you know, most importantly, of what we're doing and how we're serving the community. So, you've heard how far we've come, and we're excited about continuing the work, you know, to fold it into the current strategic direction and performance goals. And with that, we will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We will go to Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Protem Smith. I really appreciate the dedication that everyone is showing to data integrity. Reporting is only as good as the data that is used to develop it. So, seeing that that data is being audited and that we're really stressing the importance of ensuring that we're using good data is great to see. When we talk about the software, are we talking about ActiveNet?
President Protem Smith, Commissioner Musich, we are your favorite.
My favorite software. Let me just like, put a little asterisk there at the end of that. So, one of my biggest complaints about ActiveNet and our use of it since we've implemented it here at the NPRB is the inconsistency of program descriptions and searches and titles. And, I mean, there could be the same program at 10 different sites, and it could have 10 different descriptions. And when we start talking about these audits that we're doing, are those audits, is part of that catching instances like that where we have the same thing being delivered across the system that is described differently if you're at a different park or has different metadata? Because I always found it very complicated to help my constituents find the programs they're looking for if I could not figure out all of the titles that we would have to search for to get them what they wanted. So, is part of that audit that you're doing identifying situations like that and working to correct that problem with the staff that are creating these?
President Protem Smith and Commissioner Musich, I have to look at my notes because I'm not quite used to it yet. Sorry about that. So, I'm going to illustrate the reality that sometimes there are, you know, 1,000 activities, you know, during these audits. So, the fine-tuning of those exact descriptions are not audited. We do work with the service area managers, and the service area managers also audit the programs as well. So, we could, we could discuss that with Mimi and talk about some ideas around aligning descriptions and providing a more consistent way of communicating those activities to customers.
Okay. So, are we, we're still having individual Recreation Center directors building out their programming in the system? We have not centralized the creation of those entries?
Correct. We have, we've done that with some camps, some citywide initiatives, but those neighborhood-based activities are all created by rec staff or, you know, aquatic staff at the aquatics level.
Okay. So, I still see that as being a problem. Because when there is that level of inconsistency, it makes it incredibly difficult for the users of that tool to be able to identify what they need. So, I would love if we could create some sort of like, style guide essentially for these types of build-outs with, if we have some sort of index of all of the programming types that are common across the system and say, "Look, if you're putting on Open Gym for Tots, this is what you call it. Here's the metadata tags you need to use. Here's this description we suggest." So that there's that consistency across the system, even though it is different communities, different neighborhoods. Maybe you need to tack on to the end of that something that really speaks to the people that live in that neighborhood. But to have that core of the description be consistent for folks so that they can find it, even if it's outside their neighborhood. Because sometimes, the stuff that's happening in your neighborhood, it doesn't work for you. But something somewhere else might. And if you could find it, that would be awesome. That's all I got, I think. Oh, one more question. Do we have access to these reporting tools that you shared with us this evening as part of this presentation?
Yes. President Protem, Commissioner Musich, not at the moment, but it's plausible. We would just need to get them set up on our Intranet with access. But they've already been shared with staff internally, so they're live.
Okay. I would love if this could be added to Commissioner access on PB Intra. I might be really curious to dig into the Power BI reporting. It looks fascinating. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Abini.
Thank you. I just wanted to extend my appreciation for you actually reading the strategic directions and the sub-goals back to us. I know you commented that you were reading that. But I was glad to hear that incorporated in there. And then I'm just really going to be just sending my thanks to the leadership team because these last two presentations particularly, I can see those lines, those lines very clearly to the strategic direction work. And I'm new at this, but this is exhilarating, I have to say. Like, so, thank you so much. I'm excited about this, and I think some of Commissioner Musich's comments, particularly on keywords or style guide, great suggestions. Yay! That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Minz.
Yes, thanks for the work you guys have done on ActiveNet, which, I mean, I know that we are limited by ActiveNet's usability and that we have a lot of data in there. What I'm wondering about is, so, these dashboards, like, how is this changing practice currently in rec centers? How are we, I noticed that even on the graphics, you know, we have more programs but less program participants. What, do these, do these numbers reflect any programming that's done in our parks that's not through park board staff? And I have a lot of questions, actually. But I would love to, like, maybe we can set up a time to kind of go through those. I'm really excited about the use of data to sort of, you know, drive what we're doing. But I'm wondering how, how are we going to impact families and young people? Because the way that I see, I've rarely registered for a program in the park board for myself. I go to the park board maybe every once in a while. But usually, youth and families are registering for these programs, and it is a significant barrier to find access because there are different... And I work with spreadsheets a lot. So, I just, can't we just export every single program and then sort it and then figure out which ones need to be titled something different? So, how are we making this easier for families to register? And how are we making it easier for young people to be in these programs in multiple ways? And I like the idea that you guys are taking in, "How did you register for the park?" Personally, I would rather register just at the park. But I want to know about things that are outside of my neighborhood for my kids because not every park has everything. And although in the past, that's been an expectation of park buildings, provide everything that you possibly can. Is there discussions around this data to make that more service area-specific? Botno Park can't do everything for everybody, but they should have baseball because they have a good baseball field. Or they should have, you know, after-school programming because they have a good tutoring area. Whatever that is, is there, is this data going to help us get to more service area-level where there's equity throughout the system instead of every park does their own thing and we just collect the data on it? Because that's not working. And I hope that we're going forward to help create equity in our programming so that we know that there's a great program that happens in South. How do we get, how does another park director in Northeast get that person's name and easily be able to program for it? So, can anybody speak to like, how this data is going to lead us to that objective for families and youth?
President Protem Smith, Commissioners. Some of the work that's been done that just started pretty much towards the latter part of last year is that we are using these data profiles to work with staff to set performance goals. Last year, we met with every park staff. We had them review their data for their community and talk about what they learned, what they, what they knew, what they didn't know, how they're using this to plan ahead for their next-year programming. They set performance goals with their service area manager around programming and using the data. And we're planning to do those again at the end of this year where they will physically come in and present to a group of executive, you know, people and talk about what, you know, what has happened since the last time that we met, what they've instituted, what they've learned, what they're planning for, for the future. And it is, it is, you know, intended to be used for, for not only teaching and planning, but for accountability as well. Like, what, you know, what demographics do you have? What programming do you have in that demographic? And if you don't, why? Oh, there's a senior center, you know, three blocks away that does a lot of services. You know, if there's reasoning, that all is talked about. But it is going to be used as a tool to start moving in a direction where we're better meeting the needs of the community and we're understanding what our community is and planning that way. And then, as far as the question about consistency with the verbiage and how the public-facing side works, they've done a great job of, you know, working with these audits. But Jamie's correct, it's, the volume of programs is a lot. And so, we are planning with, there's some new positions coming on that are going to be strictly focused on programming citywide as part of that $2.6 million. And those positions will be tasked with working very closely with Jamie and his role and analyzing and making better and, you know, definitely helping with the standardization of how we describe these programs and making the public side better. So, there's hope in that. better, so there's hope in that camp, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
Just had a couple other separated kind of questions, but first of all, I just want to say I love the theme "Scale Up the Story." I really love that, I mean, that talks about what data does and it talks about the emotional commitment that our youth and our families and adults have to our programming, so, I mean, I really think that should be a slogan or on a banner somewhere. But as far as the standards, I'm just curious if there's any specific standards as you work through these with the rec center operators. You mentioned demographics, is there any particular, are you talking about capacity? Are you talking about, what are the other, is there going to be a list of standards that you're going to eventually determine with this data with the rec center operators? Where you'd like them to go and what those categories might be?
President Pro Tem Smith, Commissioner Schaefer, the standards are sort of, it's the big fish in the room that we're working towards. Without good data governance and data standards for the organization, which is still relatively new to us, we don't know what it's going to include until we're really digging in on it, so the demographic standards is a, the first one we've really taken on because it kind of fit nicely into a variety of projects, from our citywide survey to our community engagement to our registration softwares. And so, there's 12 different standards in there for how do you ask a certain type of question and the answer options, format and structure as well. So, that's a very specific one. A lot of the other standards are going to be things more along the lines of who owns the data and maintains it, and I don't mean Lyndon owns it, but the title of the position at the park board that's in charge of a data set, in charge of updating the data set, and that is the person who owns the authoritative copy of it. So, that's more of data governance, and we'll be setting standards, developing standards, I should say, around things like that to help the whole organization. But a lot of these things are really bleeding over into each other, and that's a good thing, that's why Jamie and I spend several hours a week talking through these things, because when it comes to his audit tracking, as well as the front-end proposal forms, I need to know what the questions are, how they're structured, how it goes into the software, so when I pull reports out of the software, and it's often multiple reports, that that thing, you understand that the data, that our staff understand the data that's going in, the questions that are being answered, is coming back out, and that's why we're asking them to do it a certain way, and that's why I mentioned earlier, a culture of taking the data seriously and treating it as important information. So, a lot of these are things, you know, it's not about, there's one right way to do it necessarily, it's more of in certain places, you know, really eliminating it, so there's a library of consistent language that we always use, that's a cultural practice, not really a data standard, but, and I'm probably getting further away from the answer you were hoping for at this point, but...
Well, yeah, I appreciate the input, but then I was also thinking about the output, and I understand that that's something that's down the road, but as you figure out what this, as long as you get the data in there right, eventually that'll affect your standards or what you're looking for in your programming. But then secondly, how, I noticed in your data set it went to like 2019, is there, is there any way that we can go back through the binders that have been dusted off and maybe even pick a sample every five years? I mean, I know you wanted a lifetime job in this maybe, but I'm just wondering, you know, it would be an interesting exercise if there was the capacity to take a sample, even if it's not every year, backward looking.
President Pro Tem Smith, Commissioner Schaefer, that is a great question, and it really is a case-by-case basis. Something like that one is such a manual data entry-heavy process that I would literally spend a year on it and I'd get one data set back, so it's probably, personal opinion at this point, it's probably not worth it. And that's why it's really important for us to think about the methodology here, those, the way those counts were conducted was inconsistent, so the historic data is not as useful as, you know, for research purposes, for example. I would not recommend that. Now, moving forward, I know everyone's using the same tool, and I know they're not writing things in because it's dropdown menus, you know, that's another data governance standard practice that we're putting in there. I once got a list of parkkeeper titles, it was spelled 17 different ways, that's one job at the park board. So, when we talk about consistency and things, a lot of the times, it's much smaller than just the historic things because we cannot correct those. The volume is too big or the variation is too broad for it to be worthwhile, and that's really been our problem with data historically, is these things are so large to correct that we didn't have the resources to do it. So, a big part of our focus, what Jamie and I do, is make sure we don't repeat those problems, that all new data is consistent and put in there, because we really can't undo a lot of the historic problems.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question, and I have one other quick question. Is there a way that we can start to do this analysis around our events as well as rec programming? I feel like, you know, when we think about fireworks, when we think about some of these other things that are kind of looming before us, it would be interesting to know some of the demographics, what are the pieces, and how would that look like, or maybe that's informally happening now?
President Pro Tem Smith and Commissioner Schaefer, I think eventually, anything that we put on, we would like data back about, all the way up to the evaluation we get from our participants coming back and being added into that as well, which is an external thing. And when Commissioner Minz mentioned earlier about, you know, can you just export the whole thing, actually, this is a great example why you can't. Events in our software is different than a program, and it's different than a permit or a reservation, and so, all of those are stored in different places in the software. So, we need to do a lot of defining and cleaning up those definitions, what is an event versus a reservation in the software, and that's not, before we can get to the point of getting that data back out, and I'm stepping on the toes of Annie's presentation later tonight, but those are software fixes, not staff or training issues. Once we fix that, the data coming out of it will be useful and we can run reports and events and other things, but right now, we just literally cannot.
Thank you.
Superintendent Bangora?
Thank you for recognizing me, President Pro Tem Smith, I just wanted to make sure, one of the things I did here, and I know we've talked about this before, one of the things that, when I was in Mecklenburg at the time, we did a naming convention, and a naming convention is what we're talking about specifically around, and it's based in CAPRA, and it's based in really standards around what you call, the reason why it started for me was that when I had the deputy director came to me one day in the office and said, you know, "Al, I'm trying to pull down everything I can find within nature programs," but he says, "I can't do it because there's all these different," he could pull it from the environmental folks because they named things nature, but then if you go to the rec center, it's like, you know, one of those names that are just cute, you know, and so he couldn't pull the data to really go across the system to really get the volume of all the great work that was being done, because he could not track all of the programs. So, we literally ripped apart the entire, everything within recreation, and we did a naming convention. The naming convention then says if you have a category, subcategory, it's standard across the entire organization, so this is not something that is unusual, clearly understand what we're going to do there. I wanted to acknowledge that this is, it's not complicated, it exists, it's real, and we've done it before, and I know that we were bringing this forward, but I also want to acknowledge the amazing work to get to this point. I just wanted to say, like, you know, Adam Arvidson back over here with the Data Insights team, Jennifer and I sitting in a room way back in 19, in my office with Post-it notes and paper and sort of looking at how we're going to adjust and move. Thank you to Jennifer, I mean, strategy-wise, because my head's up over here and she narrows it down, so, great work. I literally had tears in my eyes when they presented this in the office, I literally did, because this is what I've been thinking about for a long time, they got it. Lyndon came here, Jamie, and his role when he switched this, and what he's been able to do in this organization has been stunning, and I wanted to give credit, you know, and Mimi, and I just want to make sure I acknowledge this, to get to this point is something really special, because, and it's changing the way that we look at recreation, how we use data to drive decisions and to move, and it goes to Commissioner's Men's question, you know, how do we, when we talk about accountability and listening to the community and shifting and adjusting to things that the community wants, we now can look at this and look at performance and be very clear, when we come to the board and promise something, that we're accountable to it. If we see that the data is not matching up to what's being needed, we can respond. So, this is very exciting, I just wanted to address that, just to make sure. My grateful thanks to the talented staff that we have, I mean, it's been, to get this point for me is incredibly exciting. I know we have a lot of work to do still, we have a lot of more improvement to do, and with your help, we can get there, and so, thank you for your questions, and just very proud of this team, so, that's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioner Minz?
Do I get to speak again?
One more time.
So, I would like to say that I have a love-hate relationship with data because I'm a schoolteacher, and the data doesn't always tell, it tells a story, and I think that it's really great that we're getting to this point, to where we can have this data available to rec center leaders and to the system-wide, because then we can start to really understand the story of recreation in our system, and it might not look the way we want to right now, right? I mean, it might not, we've got to listen to the data, and I want us to really be careful to, like, try to get the data to tell a certain story that we want it to tell and actually allow it to tell us what it's saying about what programming we're providing in the community, where we've had success, where we might need some improvement, and how we want to readjust. The one thing, and culture of the building, it's all right, I'm done, it's fine, we can talk later, Jamie, maybe we can meet some other time, but...
Seeing no more lights, I think we are going to move forward with allowing each one of the commissioners to share any updates, petitions and communications, and we'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
I'll pass, thank you. I will pass as well. I'll pass.
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 I normally pass, but I'm not going to pass. So, I just have to say, I'm on a street in Minneapolis that's going under significant reconstruction, it's going to be a totally different type of street. In fact, it's a street that I moved on to, Bryant Avenue South, that didn't have any street trees, but now we're going to have street trees. And the other, two days ago, I came up to my front door and I had a hanger from the park board telling me, "Hey, look for a white tee painted on your new curb because you're getting a tree," and with some really good instructions for what the park board's going to do, what they're going to equip me to do, which is mainly just knowledge and a larger water bill, but I'm okay with it. So, I just really wanted to give a compliment, this is really well done, and there's, my neighbors are all excited that also got the green tag, so thank you very much.
President Forney?
Thank you, Pro Tem Smith. Just for all of you to know, all of you've had a chance to chair your committees, being those co-chairs, and it occurred to me that we should give the opportunity to our vice president, and I am so grateful, I can't remember exactly when I asked her to do this, but since I asked her, I had family death and ended up going to Scotland last week, and so, I'm just very grateful that she took over. I don't know how I would have handled it and everything, but I'm eager to hear, she has some report about NRPA that she attended during the middle of arranging for this meeting. So, first of all, I want to say that we do have Superintendent Bangora here now, and I hope that we will give him a chance to be a part of petitions and communications and this incredible thing that he got to experience being with our president. But I also am going to say that I arrived late last night and I am pretty jet-lagged, and I am going to bow out of the meeting as soon as we finish petitions and communications and recess to go to Admin and Finance, so, thank you.
All right, Superintendent Bangora?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Smith, I appreciate the opportunity, I'd be really quick, I had incredible experience, I flew out yesterday, Tuesday, late, got in DC probably around, I don't know, 11 o'clock, was up about 6:00 AM, was at the Reagan International Conference Center with the White House. I was on a panel in the president's, and I always get this, I make sure I always say this right, but it was the White House Conference on Hunger, Nutrition and Health. So, this is the first time in 50 years, the president, I stood there, I was watching the president, and I had, I had those, I probably had the facial expression of like an awe of just sitting there, right, watching him speak, and it was incredible to be at the White House or to be in, you know, on Pennsylvania Avenue, just right down from the White House with a lot of incredible people that were from around the country that were looking at ending hunger and food disparities within communities, the president is very committed in the White House to ending that by 2030. I was, I think, the only park, probably, person on the panel, I was in the fourth panel, which was around physical health and exercise and wellness. There was five panels in total, and from across the country, there were some really wonderful speakers, I met a lot of people, Cory Booker, you know, it was amazing, Rice, Council Rice, or, I'm sorry, Susan Rice, yeah. I walked past her, we were coming down the stairs and we locked eyes, and then I just did that kind of look again, you know, and, you know, starstruck, and she stopped and said hi, and we talked a little bit, it was really amazing. And I was able to talk about Minneapolis Park and Recreation, about our park system, what parks mean to people and advocating for parks. It was an incredible experience to sit there and be on a panel, I don't have any idea I was chosen, but I was so fortunate to be up there with some really brilliant minds around ending hunger for, I think it used to be one in four children, where, you know, now it's like one in 20, but one in 20 is still too many, right? No child should go hungry. But the park system, we serve 140,000 meals a year to help feed our children, you know, in our parks, so it's just a part of what we do, and then we talk about athletics and where parks connect for the well-being and health of our community and for our young people, we talk about transportation, you know, what are the barriers to come to our parks? We have great examples in our parks, we're fortunate to have an incredible bicycle system where kids can get their own pedal power in their legs and they can go from place to place. So, it was really an amazing experience, and I'm incredibly grateful, I'm sorry I'm late to the meeting, but what an incredible experience, and I can talk to you more about it later on, but it's just really grateful, so, we shall all be proud of Minneapolis Park and Recreation and parks in general in the country and what they mean to people, you know, it's just, it's incredible, and so, thank you for that. I also want to say, NRPA was pretty awesome, too, but the one thing that I did here, too, was that sitting is not a very good thing. Sanjay Gupta talked amazing, amazing beginning, and I know we were there, and he talked about how wealth does not then signify health, right? It doesn't. We spend trillions of dollars into this country, 19 states already have people, they talked about, the president talked about it, diabetes, hypertension, it's just unbelievable in the country, and why our country is like that, but, again, the value of parks and what that means to people, to go and walk and get healthy and experience nature and what that means. I am so fortunate, I've walked now, I think we've walked, President Forney, we've walked, Commissioner Musich, we walked the Winchell Trail, Commissioner, God, Menz, I'm tired, how we walked, yeah, yeah, how we walked, you know, we walked, and just, and Commissioner Alper, how we walked, I really enjoy it and the conversations we have, so thank you for that, I really, really enjoy my time with you all, and I'm up for any walks, anytime you guys choose, I will show up and we'll be there, and we'll just kind of walk together and, you know, and so, thank you for that, and that's it, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. I will share, I went to the conference, it was amazing, it was very overwhelming, it's been a long time since I've been around that many humans in an enclosed space, and, yep, I wore my mask, I did not mind, not many people were, but it was, there was a significant amount of learning that transpired for me just to talk with, like, recreation staff from all over the country, was super impactful for them to share kind of like their joys and their not-so-joyish moments with leadership and, like, what people like me in elected positions can do to help advocate for simple resources, as well as just reminding me to say thank you to staff, and popping up to visit, it doesn't have to be anything formal, but it just says that leadership supports you, and that was a really big deal to me. What was funny is I was running late to a session and I could hear the presenter talking, it was a virtual session, and it was Annie Osen, and I was like, why do I know this voice as I get closer to the... And I was like, why do I know this voice as I get closer to the pod? And it was like, and I'm just chuckling because I'm like, oh, that's Annie. The irony of me being from Minneapolis and her talking about some of the work that she's doing with her team. One of my most memorable conversations was with one of the leaders from LA during the height of COVID, where they transformed many of their rec centers that were close proximity to their pools into kind of homeless, makeshift homeless shelters for the unhoused, and then how that partnership kind of evolved in partnership with FEMA, where they ended up turning their underutilized parking lot into a trailer home with trailers that were provided by FEMA. But how critical and how devoted their staff were to keeping people safe who were living on the streets and utilizing all of the buildings that they had. It was really inspirational and just sort of transformational, and I thought that that was ridiculously amazing, because I remember the height of COVID and being extremely like paranoid about being inside with people. And so here we are, having people across the country who were literally putting their lives on the line to save other folks that look like them. And they had some really cool stories about successes of getting some of the unhoused folks kind of squared away and services, and how many of those folks then became some of their key staff, some of their frontline staff, in many different roles. And so I just thought it was such a great story, had such a great impact on me. So I was thankful to go. They were giving away lots of stuff. I did not take anything because I am not a hoarder, so I'm sorry. Billy, I did get you a water bottle. It's in my house, so. I saw your text late. I'm sorry, twin.
I always lose those things. She's always got them.
But otherwise, huge thank you to the staff. I did get to meet some new staff out there. I got to take my mask off so they could see what I look like, because everyone's like, I never see you without a mask. So they got to finally see my face, which is nice. And then I got some invites to come do some visits. I'll be taking folks up on our offer. I am not a winter person, so I will not be walking outside with you, but we are welcome to walk around the circle in my office many of hundreds of times. But huge thank you to our staff, to the folks in the room, to the folks in the rec centers, to the folks that do the work every single day. Super appreciate you, really thankful, and we are working to become everything that you need us to be, so that you can be everything that you need, so that our community can be healthy. And now I will recess and turn it over to Admin and Finance. Meg, go get some rest.
Thank you so much, Pro Tem President Smith. I would like to call the meeting of the Administration Finance Committee to order. Can Secretary please call the role?
President Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Menz?
Here.
Co-Chair Schaefer?
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would someone like to move to approve the agenda? Move the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda. I apologize.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I don't believe, do we have any minutes?
Nope.
No minutes. So, let's get to it. Would someone like to move our main action item tonight?
I will move Resolution 2022-290, Resolution approving the settlement of a 2022 wage reopener as part of the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Officers Federation of Minneapolis and Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Comments? No? And this is what we are going to bring back to the full board, so I guess I will just say, not seeing any lights. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. And we have, for the, I believe, the first time ever, a study item, which is very exciting about our history of the budget. Thank you very much, Director Weissman.
I am going to be presenting a budget history overview. And before I get started, I'm going to apologize to everyone for the length of this presentation. Usually I try to be short, sweet, and to the point, but this one is walking us through 10 years of history. And I know that I present 10 years of history often, but this is the first time that I was asked to present it in this way. And I was approached, as you are beginning your budget process, I was approached to provide a history of what past boards have invested in, what has been their philosophies, how has the budget evolved and changed over the past 10 years with previous boards. So as I look at 2013 to 2022, there are actually five kind of overall guiding themes. Implementing organizational restructure to improve service delivery both internally and externally. Restore our service levels to pre-recession levels. Correct years of deferred investments. System equity investments, which you have started to hear a lot about, and then responding to new challenges. On the strategy side, or the funding side, we have looked at property tax requests for both levy and capital. We have implemented operational efficiencies, restructure, and realignment of positions and costs. We have utilized chargeback models in several different areas that I'll go over. And we've implemented vacancy savings as a budget model, into the budget model, to increase capacity. And for government entities, this is something that a lot of governments do. It's not something that the park board had historically done, so I'll talk and walk you through that shift in philosophy. So I'm talking about the budgets in two specific segments. So 2013 to 2018 is six years, and I've chosen to talk about it in this manner because of the leadership of our board during that time. So during that six-year period, we had a pretty consistent board of commissioners. Seven commissioners served for that full period of time, January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2017. So they served that entire period of time. We also had one superintendent during that period of time, Jane Miller, who served as superintendent from November 2010 through January 2018. So just to establish our starting point, the NPRB at 2012 was at our lowest service level in our most recent history. We had just ended a very significant recessionary period within the history of our organization as well as the United States. During that time, during that recession, we eliminated 117 full-time positions. Service levels were reduced. Repair, rehabilitation, capital, equipment, and infrastructure investments were deferred. And so, beginning in 2013, that started the rebuilding of our system post-recession. So, a lot of our downsizing and loss of full-time positions was accomplished through attrition, retirement incentives. There was some direct layoffs that occurred in 2010 and 2011, but most of the full-time position losses was through that attrition and retirement incentives. So we didn't necessarily get to choose which positions we were eliminating. It just happened to be the people who chose to retire and the positions that ended up being vacant during certain times. So when you think about the rebuilding, it is the rebuilding and understanding what is the needs of the full organization. So I don't always, I'm usually pretty straightforward, don't usually joke, but I can tell you that while I was doing this, like, the whole time I was doing this and working on this, and some of this was really late at night, I kept having the Gilligan's Islands theme song going through my head. So sit right back, and you're going to hear a tale, a tale of a fateful trip, of how we rebuilt our system. And it's not necessarily from the ground up, but it definitely was from a pre-recession to get to that post-recession levels. So it was really around rebuilding, reinvesting, and reimagining. What should our organization look like? How should it operate? What innovations had occurred? What new technology was available? What enhancements could be made? What process improvements could be put in? Process improvements, you know, for those of us that were here, process improvement became ingrained in us during this period of time. How we do what we do, and how can we do it better, faster, cheaper, easier, right? Do more with less, you hear a lot. That doesn't always work, and we're not always, and as a government entity in parks and rec, it doesn't work for us, right? Everybody wants what they want, when they want it, and you have elected bodies that don't like to say no. So, we entered into 2013, we implemented organizational restructure, the organizational performance work began, and it started to produce some effective rollouts. So the first thing was the leadership and service area structure was developed and created and implemented, and that structure is what we operate under today, so our leadership structure as it is today. The first operational practice that was reviewed was our forestry tree pruning practices. That was one of the areas that received the most internal complaints from employees. It was also one of our, how do you say it? Not safe. It was one of our areas where we were experiencing a lot of employee injuries. So that was the first area that was looked at and redid. We invested in new equipment. We changed the tree pruning process, and in the outcome, it was safer. We actually were able to reduce some positions. We were able to redistribute other positions. And then the next year, we looked at the trash hauling and recycling process, and that same thing happened. We invested in new equipment. We invested in new trash recycling containers. It ended up being a safer process for both our employees and also saved time and money, and we were, again, able to redistribute resources other ways. We looked at positions. Every time that there was a vacant position that came available, we looked at those positions, and we compared it or contrasted it with and weighed it against what were the needs of the organization. So other, some areas, we went too far with the retirements and the attrition, and so we needed to build some of those areas back up. And we might have other areas where it was no longer needed, and so we did some shifting amongst those. So implementing organizational restructure, this is a lot of data, and it's small, so I apologize for that. But on these next two slides, there's a lot of shifts and a lot of movements. Communication and marketing, the very first line, communication representatives. There was a time where we didn't have a communications and marketing department. There was a long time where that communications and marketing department was one person. And as you know, as technology has changed, and websites and social media, we've had to build our communications and marketing areas. So we did that during this period of time. HR, we received a delegation of authority from the city to do our own recruitment and classifications. When I started at the park board 28 years ago, our HR department was, again, one person. And we had over 500 full-time staff. The city did a lot of those services for us, so we would have to travel to City Hall to do our recruitment. And we had city staff that were doing the recruitment for our positions. So you'll see increases to our HR department as we've brought that in-house and providing direct services to our employees here at the park board. Finance, we centralized our requisition processing and received an additional count clerk to do that. We added the safety coordinator. Again, safety was a primary focus of this early process improvements and performance work, and it was very clearly identified that we needed to have a safety position. And I'll talk later, when we get into the self-insurance fund, how all of that work has transformed our workers' comp. So on the bottom of the sheet, you'll see a reduction of six arborists. That was directly related to that tree pruning practices changes that happened during that On this slide, you'll see that we did a restructure from having service area foremen to having service area managers. So that's just a job swapping out what we call position conversions now. Then you'll see mobile equipment operator reductions, and those were related to the trash hauling changes. And the parkkeeper eliminate, there weren't parkkeeper eliminations, but we were able to redeploy parkkeepers that were having to do trash hauling in our regional system. We were able to deploy them to do other functions within our system after we did that. We added a sustainability forestry coordinator. We added natural resource positions and water quality positions to start setting us up for future. And then planning positions were added and funded through a project chargeback model. So that is one of the areas that we were added, that had previously, cuts had gone too far, and we were able to add those positions back and have those positions charged to the capital projects in which they work. So in the next area, restore service levels to pre-recession. So, the next area, restore service levels to pre-recession levels. The biggest thing here is the 20-year neighborhood park plan. We added $3 million of property tax revenue in 2017 to improve our maintenance service levels. We also used vacancy savings to fund park police officers, and we reduced some seasonal and part-time staffing to reestablish some recreation and asset management positions. So, park police, you'll remember from our previous reporting that they have had a high service level of 38 sworn officers. Their lowest level was 33. So, we were trying to build the capacity of our police department back by adding those two police officers. And you'll see in some of the next slides that those two police officers didn't stick. They were actually removed from the budget in a future budget cycles. So, MPP 20 took care of maintenance, rehab, repair, rehab, and capital. Maintenance and repair is reflected on this slide, and you will see that there are carpenter, apprentice carpenters, gardeners, managers, park ops managers, trades manager, mobile equipment operators were added back, parkkeepers, and the parkkeeper trainee program was established, and additional parkkeepers and plumbers were added. So, this was a significant addition to our asset management and our care for park assets and reestablishing those levels back to the pre-recession levels. So, correcting years of deferred investments. So, the first thing is in 2014, we established the operation facility transfer out of the general fund into the capital project funds. And this is that our operational facilities, our maintenance facilities had really lacked investments, and they still are in critical need of rehab. And so, we've started to address them through this funding, and we have a lot of work to go. Our internal service funds, our equipment operations, during the recession, we artificially held our equipment rates low to help out the general fund during the recession. So, what that happened, because they were kept artificially low, we had to delay equipment replacement. So, over 50% of our mobile equipment was past its useful life. Older equipment needs more repairs. More workplace injuries occur because they're working with older equipment. And so, we increased rates and replacements over a five-year period to get us back to a standard replacement model. And unfortunately, we're seeing some backlog now, again, because of supply chain issues and other things, but definitely not to the level that we were at in 20, you know, starting in 2013. Our IT, information technology services, you can imagine how much investment has occurred over the last 10 years in IT. And it's needed, right? We needed to be brought up to the 20th century, quite frankly. We had a lot of staff and employees that didn't have access to computers, that didn't have access to cell phones, that we had network and server, servers that were, you know, antique. And we all know, you know, what's happened with softwares and things that make work, make our work work at this point. So, there was a lot of investment in technology. And then our self-insurance fund. Because of the work of our safety coordinator, because of the work of our equipment ops manager and providing new equipment for our employees, plus, you know, the work of our leadership and our board investing general fund excess fund balance to this cause, we have been able to reduce our workplace injuries consistently. And we're seeing it in our workers' comp claims. They're less frequent, they're less, they cost less, and we have been able to reduce our rates, our self-insurance rates in workers' comp over the course of the 10 years. And then NPP 20 on this one, to correct years of deferred investment in our neighborhood parks. I can't, you know, we all live this now. We see, we see the results of it. We're six years in. So, there is a whole list of 15 employees that were added to our system that in some manner are direct charged to our capital program. Either, a lot of these, the trades are part of our rehab program, but they also do work within the actual capital projects as well. So, our system equity investment. We have continually added staff to our system as we have added new facilities or upgraded facilities. And so, Weber Natural Swimming Pool came online, and we provided activation with seasonal lifeguards as well as maintenance staff. Phillips Pool, when it came, became back online, we added significant full-time aquatics positions as well as maintenance to our budget. REC+ budget, REC+, when we, it has expanded due to increasing enrollment, and we've also added the therapeutic recreation position for recreation. And then based on our recreation equity matrix, as we've expanded our racial equity work, we, one of the first operating areas that we tackled was the REC centers themselves, and we increased recreation funding for part-time staffing and supplies utilizing the equity matrix. And so, this shows that there were 12 positions added based on system equity investment, and it includes two parkkeepers and then the recreation positions. So, responding to new challenges. In this time period, we had the Emerald Ashbore infestation and tree loss due to storms, the tree levy that everyone likes to call it, and it was the eight-year program and began in 2014, and this year was the final planting and the successful completion of that program. Land purchase reserve transfer began in 2016, and that was, and that is due to the fact that we were starting to see properties come available, and we didn't have enough funding in our land purchase reserve account. And if we don't, if we're not able to procure those properties, it may be another 100 years before we can do that again. So, we've started to allocate some money out of the general fund into our land purchase reserve account. We also, at this point during this time period, started to see some increases in youth violence, the need for more community engagement. So, it was the creation of the community outreach department and street reach. The youth violence prevention position was added during this time, and there was also outdoor supervision during school out time that was increased. So, you'll see here the positions that were added to the budget for those areas. So, that is the end of that period of time. So, 2019 to 2022 was the next four years. We had three commissioners, Born, Fornian, Musich, that remained on the board, and we had six commissioners that joined the board on January 1st, 2018. Superintendent Miller left the system. They, the board contracted with Superintendent Emeritus, Mary Anderson, and she served as our interim superintendent from January 2018 to January 2019. And then Superintendent Al Bangora joined us as superintendent in January 2019. So, implementing our organizational restructure for improving service delivery, both internally and externally. This new board was very youth investment focused. I remember our first budget retreat, and they were requesting to have free daycare for all. They were requesting to have $2 million of recreation funding. There were a lot of big ideas and really a youth investment focus. They eliminated positions in other departments to fund the investments in youth employment and youth programming while they worked towards getting more property tax dollars. They didn't, they didn't wait to implement the youth investment. The one thing that came through very clearly is they wanted to see the youth investment reflected in the budget. They wanted to see movement of that investment throughout the whole four-year period. During this time, the Park School Community Campus position was added to the, added to recreation. It was supported through a property tax increase. They also prioritized asset management positions, and you'll see that reflected as we go through here. The intergovernmental relations position was funded by contractual services reduction, and then Superintendent Bangora, as superintendents do, put through some organizational changes and implemented those. And some of those, you received presentations from today. So, the Community Connections and Violence Prevention Department was created. The Data Insights Team that reports to Adam Armenson was put together, and then the recreation leadership structure was realigned and changed. Positions were realigned and accounts were realigned to meet the needs of the community So, on this slide, one of the very first things you will see is the reduction of one police officer. So, I alluded to that. We had added two, so we went from 33 to 35. Now, during this budget slide, we went back down to 34. We also had the archivist as a full-time position. The board at the time wanted to fully eliminate the archive position. We were able to fund it at a part-time level. The forestry outreach coordinator was put in the budget during this cycle. Gardeners, horticulture crew leader, and mobile equipment operators came online for We also have parkkeepers. We have 10 full-time parkkeepers that were added during this part of the process, and they were added by eliminating four of the parkkeeper trainee positions as well as through a seasonal parkkeeper reduction as, as they were, they were supporting more full-time employment as opposed to seasonal employment at that point. There's a water resource lead that was added. And then during this same period, you'll see that the planning division lost three full-time project management staff. And so, those are the areas that started to see reductions in order to fund the asset management positions and recreation positions. And again, the Park School Campus Coordinator is shown here, recreation supervisor, and two youth program specialists that were added by reducing other areas. So, restoring service levels to pre-recession levels. This is where our youth investment comes in. We received the 2.6 million, and there are 24 staff that are added to our system in recreation, environmental stewardship, and then two for IT. Our system equity investment is now a part and built into our current service level calculations, our financial projections, and our maximum property tax levy request. So, this is a solidifying that when we bring on new parks into our system, we have a standard service level that we need to provide those areas. And we are starting to talk about them to the BET, to the mayor and city staff so that they are aware and looking forward, you know, as we look forward, that there will be additional staffing that will be brought online because of those system equity investments. So, you'll see the event coordinators for activating the parks. You'll see a painter, parkkeeper crew leaders, and parkkeepers that have been added to our system for the system equity investment. So, responding to new challenges. How we talk about pre-recession service levels and post-recession service levels, we will now hopefully eventually be talking about pre-COVID and post-COVID service levels, right? You got the presentation from recreation this evening. You saw some of the participation numbers are down. That's still the recovery from COVID, right? People, our facilities still, especially REC+ sites, will still shut down if there's COVID in the sites. I think you have some hesitation still from people to really come back to the inside of a park, right? They all loved being outside during COVID, so now it's part of trying to make them feel safe and get them back inside the park. So, in 20, in 2021, it was really a difficult year for us. COVID had hit. We responded throughout the year in 2020, but we were planning for our budget in 2021, and we knew the impact that COVID was taking on the community. And so, we did a 0% property tax levy increase. That's significant for an organization our size. We didn't allow for any inflationary growth. We didn't allow for the union contracts and the increases that we were giving our employees. And we also had a board that was very focused on protecting the gains that they had made with their youth investment. And so, during that one year, we lost five or six positions. And one of them was the other police officers, so that's two police officers. We're back to 33. We added street reach, full-time employees because of the people experiencing home We added Street Reach full-time employees because of the people experiencing homelessness, the youth violence, the murder of George Floyd, and the civil unrest. So we made some investment into Street Reach during that period. Finance lost an analyst. Human Resources lost an associate. And then Environmental Stewardship lost a carpenter apprentice and a foreman in equipment repair. And then we had a youth development supervisor that retired. And we had restructured that area, so that position was eliminated. And then again, we completed the Emerald, successfully completed the Emerald Ashburn tree last due to storms. So you'll see a reduction of six positions that were part of that program. And we were able to do that through attrition. So if you look at our full-time employee changes between 2013 and 2022, the first six years, we were rebuilding our organization. And the increases are fairly represented throughout the whole organization. We added 104, basically 104 positions. They were split amongst all the divisions and departments. During the second four years, you will see that three divisions were largely held constant and even lost ground within their departments. So Superintendent's Office, Deputy Superintendent's Office, and Planning lost ground or were held constant, showing the focus of this board prioritizing youth programming and environmental stewardship during those very difficult period in, in our history. So now the second thing that I was asked to do was talk about general fund excess fund balance and how previous boards have utilized this funding. So if, if you remember anything about this part of the process, remember one-time resources should be used for one-time expenditures. And I have a smiley face on my paper for that. One-time resources should be used for one-time expenditures. I have a lot of words on here. These are our financial management policies. It has clauses on proper use of one-time resources. Our fund balance policy, the requirement of the general fund having a minimum balance of 5% of expenditures, how that's calculated. And so when we talk about excess fund balance, that means it's over that 5% requirement and can be utilized for one-time uses. So how have we used the general fund excess fund balance? We've used it for early retirement of debt. We've used it for capital expenditures. We've used it for unexpected and extraordinary expenditures, other non-recurring costs. And then yes, at times, even though I say you shouldn't, previous boards have used it for ongoing expenditures. And the only time you should use it for ongoing expenditures, I will always advise you against it. But if you use it for ongoing expenditures, there has to be some sustainable way to fund it in the future. So the early retirement of debt, we have repaid our inter-fund loan repayment. And it was actually, it doesn't say it on here, but it was actually for this building. When we purchased this building and we re-haved this building into our headquarters, we loaned ourselves from the self-insurance fund to help for some of that financing. And we were able to pay that back early. We paid off the Weber Natural Swimming Pool. We had a deficit in the project. And so we used some excess fund balance to pay off that deficit in the project. We paid off, we took out a commercial loan for the Michael P. Schmidt Operations, NERC side operations building. We paid that back early and saved interest expenses related to that. On the capital expenditure side, we will use general fund to excess fund balance a lot of times for the analysis that we need to do in order to inform our decision-making around our capital expenditures. So you'll see operation facility analysis, the rec center facility, facility analysis. You'll see capital equipment, so the tree pruning capital equipment purchases were funded out of general fund excess fund balance. The trash hauling and recycling capital equipment purchases were funded out of, out of the general fund excess fund balance. So extraordinary or unplanned expenditures to highlight here, we've got the Southwest Light Rail Tunnel Study that came up that we needed to do. We have a lot of expenses around the Greco property condemnation and legal fees associated with that whole process. We needed to put money into an escrow account during this time period. We got some of that money back with the agreement. But that money we got back is allocated towards the Greco Park Development. So it didn't go back into the general fund excess fund balance. It was allocated to the actual Greco Park Development. Then you'll see, starting in 2021, all of these resolutions in 2021 that led us into this year's budget for 2022. And these all again are around the investment in youth and the uptick in youth violence that we're experiencing in our city. So you'll see that there's a lot of one-time money being directed to Street Reach, to Teen Teen Works, to the Superintendent for Encampment Authority, for free senior programming, for equipment and supplies for Street Reach, Rec Plus Scholarship Program at Weber Park, some increases to the Walt D. Sec Innovation Fund, and waiting pool money, there's a lot. And then we forgave furlough days. We had asked our employees to take furlough, unpaid furlough days as a way to balance our budget. And as we learned more about COVID and knew how it was impacting us, we didn't need that. And so we, we forgave those furlough days and made our employees whole. And we used our general fund excess fund balance to do that. And then also the COVID frontline worker payments that you guys, that this board has been approving will come out of the general fund excess fund balance. So then some other non-recurring expenditures. This is where you'll see the website redesign and content development. That happened in 2013. You'll see a youth line program evaluation, a full-time employee survey, language access plans, different things like that. And then the ongoing expenditures. The first one was, had to do with the Neighborhood Park Plan. And so we received some upfront money from the city. And we had it banked in order to spend it to implement, excuse me, NPP 20. Again, there was a sustainable way. We had the $3 million that was coming, that was coming in in 2017 so that there was a sustainable way to fund that. We used it for some Conservation Corps crews that in the next budget, we had to use O and M lottery proceeds to continue the funding for those positions. The Forestry Outreach Coordinator was removed and then added back to the property taxes and ongoing funding. And same with the Tree Preservation Coordinator. So putting things in, ongoing things into the general fund excess fund balance just means you're delaying the end result, right? You're delaying the property tax levy increase or you're delaying whatever other funding source is going to fund those. Or it doesn't get funded and then that position is eliminated or laid off. So that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you so much for that. I love numbers, so I really appreciated that. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Yes, Co-Chair Schaefer.
I just want to tell you thank you Director Wiseman for putting that together. I think it's really helpful. And it's something that I know that I'm going to go back and look at, not just tonight, because there is so much information. I think it's hard for all of us to really digest it on the spot. But I think there's a couple of ways you could even pull out that information that would be helpful for me as a commissioner to look at, whether it be by year or whatnot. So I just want to tell you thank you for the, I know it took a lot of work. And I just really appreciate that because I think it'll help us from the get-go here in our first year of, we're kind of almost through the budget process, but not quite, really to have this backward look, to understand, you know, where have the ebbs and flows happened? And I think this is going to be good meat for us to really chew on for a while. So thank you. This will continue to reap dividends, I think, in the future. So I appreciate the overview.
Co-Chair Thompson and Co-Chair Schaefer. I will email my presentation to the full board so that you all have the information.
And just one other comment. I really think it's great for the public to also have this. When we get questions about, or gripes about how we're spending budget, we can really point people to this exact moment, to come back to this and really get an overview of where their funds have gone to and how, how commissioners have guided us through. So thank you.
Commissioner Mintz.
I just wanted to reiterate how amazing Director Wiseman is. So she has to present to these people all the time. She did a really great job, and I meant to say it in the BET presentation, report. But has to report to not only our entity, but to other entities around finances. And it always makes it seem so easy to me, looking at those numbers. But one question, when do we know what the fund balance will be? You know, when do I get to go to the candy store?
Co-Chair Thompson and Co-Chair Schaefer, Commissioner Mintz. I will caution you all right now that the financial projections for 2022 look like we will not be adding to general fund fund balance. And we have, at the beginning of this year, we had about $670,000 worth of excess fund balance, of which you are allocating out $450,000 to $500,000 for this COVID pay. So I wouldn't expect that there would be candy in the candy store this year.
If there aren't any other questions or comments, I would just like to truly thank you for this. It, it's something that I personally have wanted to understand for a while now, just the broader picture. What I'm gleaning, if I can kind of ask you a question and a comment too, is that there are a lot of staff that are paid from different sources? Is this a correct, I mean, just seeing the thing with the general fund ongoing? Is there, would you recommend we try to streamline that? Or is that unavoidable, the way that we currently have everything set up? Would it be, I mean, you recommend not using ongoing funds for the general fund balance? And then obviously we, that's going on. So it, like procedurally, that's something that we could try to steer into a different place? And easily or not?
Yeah. Co-Chair Thompson, Co-Chair Schaefer, and Commissioners. What I would say is that we, we have employees who are funded in a lot of different areas, right? We have the Enterprise Fund, we have the Internal Service Fund, we have the Capital Project Fund, we have the General Fund. So as an organization of our size, we will always have employees in different areas of, of funding. So it's unavoidable and it, and it, you know, Enterprise Fund is self-containing. So we wouldn't want to fund positions that are working for an enterprise operation out of the general fund. So I, I think that the thing that I would say is that you should avoid funding any type of staffing out of general fund excess fund balance.
Seems pretty clear.
Co-Chair Schaefer.
I just had one other question that's not clear in my mind. But with this cut in planning positions that we've seen in the last four years, and you mentioned that a lot of the positions are charged back to the projects through NPP 20. We have lots of funds coming down the stream for NPP 20. Why can we not increase that? If we have these increases that go from 8 million to 11 million to 13 million, why can we not increase planning directly in relation to those projects coming down the pike?
Co-Chair Schaefer, Co-Chair Thompson. Interestingly enough, I just had this conversation yesterday with the executive team. And so what I can foreshadow for you is that, is that there is a planning chargeback model. Not 100% of your time is spent on the actual capital project. There are general fund activities that each planning staff do. And so it's, it's making sure that our model is, is working the way it's intended to work and that it's covering all of the aspects of that, of that job. So we can't just bring on a planning staff and say 100% of it is going to be charged to NPP 20 capital projects. It just doesn't, you know, it just doesn't work like that. But we will be, not for 2023, but we will be looking at our chargeback model in planning and, and right sizing it and understanding whether there's capacity there or not.
Further clarification that the mayor did not grant us our system equity investment in this go-around in the budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The system equity investment was funded.
They did, okay.
It was the strategic, asset management, our planning position that they did not fund.
Can I ask one more question, piggybacking on, on Co-Chair Schaefer? Can you unpack a little bit better this chargeback thing with the, with the NPP 20 and how that works?
Commissioner Thompson, Commissioners. You asked specifically about NPP 20, but it's not just NPP 20. So any capital project, the Plating Department charges a portion of the capital project cost as staff time for management, project management, administration, and for some of the other things we do. So it covers things like engagement, managing the consultants, any number of things that, that the consultants aren't undertaking. Right now, that, the, the chargeback model is somewhere, we, it varies by project, but it varies from probably 4% to 6% of the, of the cost of the project. So like consultant fees that are taken out of the project budget, we're also taking a portion of that project budget to cover planning staff time. Does that answer your question?
It, it does mostly. It is, how long have we had this model? Is that, because I heard you in the presentation, is that like 2013, 14?
So in fact, I just had this discussion with the Deputy Superintendent today. There was, there was a model that was created in 2013. And in fact, I followed up on that conversation with Director Swenson even this afternoon. That model actually set aside 15% of the, of the cost, which which, when you, when you look at that coupled with the cost of consultants, it meant that our soft costs were approaching 40 to 45% of, of a construction, of a project budget, which seemed untenable to us. So we have probably since 2015 reduced that into the 4% to 6% range.
Co-Chair Schaefer. Can I ask one more question to Assistant? How has the consultant percentage fluctuated in that same timeframe? You mentioned how the 4% to 5% had gone up to, you know, that it was 15 and then went to 4%. How has the consultant fluctuated?
Commissioner Schaefer, it's a good question, and I might not have as good of an answer for that. I don't know that that percentage changes because we have escalated the costs of construction, so their percentage goes up. So the, the, the variance for a consultant probably varies more with the complexity of the project. If we're doing things that we've never done before, the, the costs are probably more. Things that are unique and have extraordinary kind of extra services. And I'll, I'll pick up a project like Seven Pools Fountain, where we did aerial surveys, aerial scanning surveys, which we've never done before, so we could more accurately represent the cost of the project. That's a soft cost that we haven't had on any other project. So, so they probably vary more with the type of project than with the consultant itself.
Okay, but on average, it's 10% to 12%?
And it might go up a little more depending upon how many services we need, particularly related to construction services, and how much time we need to have for, for our consultants to be onsite and watching certain things go, go on with those projects.
Well, it's just an interesting thing, thing to think about because I feel like we want to support our planning staff through this, these projects as much as we can, or as equally as we do our consultants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I saw Commissioner Bennie's light, but you're, we're good. Yes, and Secretary Ringgold.
Co-Chair Thompson, I appreciate you giving me a minute. This was a really big gift that we had tonight because Julie fortunately has been here creating these budgets for the whole time. And so to get that kind of snapshot of history is not an easy thing to achieve. And so I really do want to thank you, Julie, for the effort that you put into this. I do think it's archival. I think in order to retain that type of history in one shot, we will want to figure out a way to retain it. So thank you.
Seeing no further lights, I would just also like to just extend my deep gratitude for that whole thing. I know it wasn't easy to put together and it does truly tell a tale. And Lisa, I'll just speak for myself and informs me greatly to a lot of different questions that I've had. So thank you so much. And it was, it was just long enough. So, perfect. Seeing no lights, I will adjourn the, uh, no, 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 one more. Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. ActiveNet update, my, please forgive me.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am here to provide you with an update on all things ActiveNet. My colleagues were here earlier this evening talking with you about some of the uses of the data that we pull from this software and many others, although the focus seems to heavily continue to come back to this particular software. When I brought this software contract to you earlier this year, I made a note that I wanted to come back to you and let you know how things were going as we moved into this new contract cycle. So that's what brings me here this evening. And I did want to do so in tandem with my colleagues Lyndon and Jamie, with Mimi, who brought the information to you on the way that we're using the data that we pull from our Recreation Management Software Systems, including ActiveNet. But this is just specific to our ActiveNet Business Process Review and an update on the implementation of the findings from that review. So this will be very brief. I am not going to follow Julie's example of a long presentation here, but I just want to give you a little update. So for history's sake, the Park Board was able to implement ActiveNet in May of 2010. It took us time to get to that point before we implemented, but that's when we first launched the first piece of the system. There's a lot that goes into getting a software system out and launched to the public. And at that time, it was the first time we were moving into a one-stop-shop methodology. We were using carbon copy receipt books. We were using a website that had embedded registration software through a local software company, Reserve Master. But that was very specific to a couple of functionalities. And when we rolled into ActiveNet, it forced us to make decisions based on guidance from the vendor, conversations that we were having amongst key stakeholders, and really our business processes at the time. And we didn't know what we didn't know. So we were building things the way that we thought would best fit our business practices as opposed to taking a step back and determining if our current business practices were the right ones to move forward with now that we were moving on with a software solution. So that's just like a little snippet on kind of the first line on the screen here. But the current contract you all approved back in March of this year, and right away, that very next day after we got the contract circulating for signatures, we reached out to our account rep and asked that we set up a Business Process Review. This was something that we had determined that if we were going to continue with ActiveNet, we were going to do it right. We were going to peel back the layers of the onion. We were going to have them take a look at how we were using the software versus how the software is intended to be used. And this is a new service in the past maybe five years that ActiveNet provides through their Professional Services Bundle, which is this kind of Business Process Review and then a system optimization based on what is found with that, that process. So we got on the schedule right away. Consultants from ActiveNet flew here from Canada and from Dallas, and they spent two days sitting in the mini haha room with key stakeholder staff as we walked through every bit and piece of the software and the way we use that software. It was the back administrative side, it was the customer user interface, it was the processes, it was the modules. Why do we use this piece of the module? Why haven't we turned on this newer function? All of those conversations were had. And that team went back, and it took them about a week and a half, to compile their largest findings report that they have ever provided to one of their clients, and opportunities for us to optimize the use of the software because we use it so vastly, because we are such a big system and because we have so many different pieces of the puzzle that make our programs and our, our service delivery happen. Jamie and Lyndon were talking about it tonight. It came up from the Commissioners here this evening. You know, can we pull the data from this type of thing? What about this? What about that? All of those pieces were part of that conversation and will be forthcoming as part of this system optimization work. So since we got that findings report, our key staff stakeholders, a very small team, have been working and preparing to implement those recommendations. We've been working on this throughout the summer, drawing up a timeline, determining who our team members are going to be for these kind of micro projects. Some of them are major projects, in order to make things work the way that we hope they will. I've, I've heard comments, you know, of disappointment maybe from members of this board on maybe the, the customer user interface and how that works. We can fix so many of these things, but we have to peel back a lot of it, fix the foundation of the way that we have built the software so it matches the way that the software is intended to be used and it matches the way that we need to use it. It's complicated, but we're, we're excited and we've begun that process. This is just a snip of the findings sheet. I don't expect you to get out binoculars or magnifying glass and try to figure out what that all says. But basically, our findings report was broken into these categories A through I. And we have an opportunity as staff to pull together teams and work on each of the pieces. CUI means Customer User Interface. I shouldn't have used an abbreviation there. I apologize for that. But each of these pieces have an opportunity for us to clean them up and to work together as a team to make this work better for staff and work better for the customers. I see there are people that are trying to read this little print and I'm happy to share it with you so you don't have to strain your eyes this late in the evening. But I'm just going to lay this out for you, kind of where, where we're looking to go. We started in spring of this year with that Business Process Review. We got that report in the summer. We started our project planning at that time. We are implementing that, those micro projects to try to fix pieces of the system, rework pieces of the system, launch new modules that exist but that we have not been able to launch because we're not set to do that based on the way things are set up. And then we hope that by spring or summer of 2023, we will actually be using an optimized system. But it takes time because we have to go backwards and peel back those layers, like I said. So a few things that we've completed already. We've been able to load in a street database. So our resident, resident checking is working almost perfectly. Before, we were having some trouble where, depending on how you typed in your address, when you built your customer profile, that may or may not toggle on or off the resident or non-resident checkmark. That fuels the way you're charged for an activity. So that was, that was one kind of base layer thing that we were able to do. We were able to get working, working with IT here at the Park Board, with our GIS professional helped us get that in there and everything working the way it needed to work. We've changed some base configuration, some real low-hanging fruit type stuff that was on that micro list that I showed on the screen before. Things that we could do in 10 minutes, we went and we did it right away. We changed, we removed facts, we changed the phone fields. Before, you have to enter a home phone. You could maybe enter a cellphone. We changed the naming on some of those things so it, it spoke more to current use and the way people access systems, the way people are contacted nowadays. We changed cell to text message field because that is our opportunity to push out notifications by text, but it wasn't explained very well using the terminology that was first built in the system. Primary phone is a lot of times right now, someone's cellphone. But if we want to be able to have them opt in or out to text messaging, whether it be a weather alert or a reminder for a class or whatever that might be, people need to opt in on that and provide us with a little bit of extra information. We straightened that out so it's more straightforward for the user. We had started testing our new customer user interface images in a sandbox, which we will be able to launch really soon. I have a few more steps that we need to do before we can actually hit go on it, but I'm going to show you it tonight. I hope it pops up. We are doing cleanup of system user profiles for staff. So that's about the permissions, what people are allowed to do. And that was one problem that we had in the beginning is that some staff had maybe too much access to the, the deep dark dungeon in, within the software. And if they clicked something on accident when they were trying to make something work, it would change things for the entire system. So we've done a lot of cleanup, a lot of work on user permissions, system user profiles, retiring things, making things unusable, really creating succinct groups so we know what we can put our staff in and who has appropriate permissions. We retired over 250,000, or around 250,000 customer records that have not been used for the past five years. That really helps us as we get to the next step, which is working with ActiveNet to de-duplicate customer records. I was helping on phones yesterday and I had someone call who needed help. She had three family members that she was registering and I was, she was the payer and each of them had three profiles. So I had to collapse each one of those in order to, to do that work. It was fine. We had a delightful chat while I did it. But I think that we can probably make this easier on people, right? So as part of this work, when we de-duplicate those accounts, it will allow us then to identify the handful of users that are left who don't have an email address as their username. Once we identify those folks, we can launch a communications campaign, reach out to them, get them set up correctly, and turn on the new user interface that requires that people use an email for their login, which will then trigger not creating duplicate accounts for the same email address. But we have to move backwards before we can move forward. So it's been a lot of work to get to that point. And then, right now, all at the same time, we're assembling these project teams. The folks that are going to get those line item things on that report done, that are going to allow us to continue to provide optimized services using the software, turning on functionality that maybe has existed for a number of years, but we haven't been able to turn it on because of the way our activity categories are set up, for example, or our age categories. And we're working with Lyndon and Jamie to make sure that we create function that matches the needs of that standardization of data collection. That way, when they go to pull the reports, everything dumps into the right buckets. We don't have to de-aggregate all of it so we can put it in the buckets, which so far, and Lyndon was way too humble sitting here, and the person who worked on it prior to him, a lot of making all of that stuff, that fancy cool dashboards that are interactive work, requires so much manual manipulation to that data because of the way that the system was built back in 2009 and 2010 for us to match it to what we need for today. And that's why it's not as easy as just switching to a different software or just turning on a new function or a new module because we have to go back and rebuild what's there so it'll work. Kind of like Lyndon was saying about, you know, going back and looking at old data. It's so much, it's like overwhelming to try to even consider that because even the current data takes so much of a human touch. So I'm going to show you what will probably be the first deliverable that you all and that the public will see of a change to the system. And it seems so silly that it takes all of these steps to get to this, but this is what happens. So I hope that this works. What you see on your screen here is the current landing page for ActiveNet. This is the legacy customer user interface. This is the customer user interface that we can't change because we need people to only be able to log in with their email address. But if we, I'm, I'm, I hope this works. I clicked on this link. Will it work? It will. Yes. Awesome. This is the sandbox and the new user interface that's super sleek. It hasn't popped up yet. That's super. I was getting a look-alike. Really? Okay, and depending on the screen size, depends on what you can see of these folks' faces, but. I'm sorry, guys. Okay, so this is screen size responsive. So if you have a phone, this is going to shrink or grow based on, or a tablet or a widescreen computer or a smaller one. The new customer user interface is straightforward. It fits your screen. You scroll through things. It tells you what you want. It just has an updated look. And right there, that's a win for us, right? Then when you move into, and if I go any further than this, it's just going to be a mess. So this is just a sandbox. But when you move into browsing and registering, you move into really straightforward, cut and dry process of registration. Things get a lot easier when we switch to something that's more modern in its look and its feel and what people are used to when they are toggling through the internet now, right? Filtering is way better in the new user interface than in the old. But again, we can't switch until we get to that point where, where we're ready to allow people to log in using their email address. So, I don't know if I have more on my slides. I don't. So I just wanted to give you that update, let you know where we are, how we are collaborating across the agency so we can make these systems work to help each other and then to help to make decisions on what we do with our offerings. And that's all I have, and I'll open it for questions.
Thank you so much. I'll send it over to Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, Co-Chair Thompson. I just have a couple of questions for you this evening. For many years now, I've been asking. And I'm really hopeful that you're going to tell me as part of this process, these things are possible. But I've been asking if there's a way for people to register multiple family members at the same time for the same program. Right now, you can only select one person. You have to go all the way through the process. You have to check out, then you have to go all the way back to the beginning and start over. Will, will that be something that's possible under this new iteration of our use of ActiveNet?
Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Commissioner Musich, I believe so.
Oh, that's very exciting to hear.
I believe so. I'm not going to bet the farm on it, but I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you know for sure, please let me know.
I will let you know. Certainly, I can ask. I will let you know. Certainly, I can ask tomorrow.
Because I do want to celebrate that with you.
I know, I was excited about it, too. So I feel like if I was excited about it, it must be something that they told me.
Okay, great. I won't hold you through that, but I, but I am hopeful now. The other thing I've been asking for is the ability for people to put in a reservation request for our reservable assets. That would include building, rooms within the building that we allow people to rent out, that would include picnic shelters that aren't part of specified picnic facility areas, and it would also include athletic fields, tennis courts, that kind of thing. Will that be a capability that comes online with these enhancements?
Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Commissioner Musich, those functions actually exist already. We have, do not have them turned on. We do not have them turned on for a few reasons, but as we move into the system optimization, we will turn much more of it on because we will have better systems in place, we'll have better controls, and we will rebuild what is called our facility matrices. Those facility matrices are what power how we charge for things within the software. Right now, there is an ability, I could turn it on, but we don't have everything lined up that we need to have lined up in order to make the processes work correctly for our business side. The software side will do what it needs to do for those facility reservations, our facility reservation requests. I am hopeful that we will be, we will have much more available to look at online, either request or reserve, as we roll into the new facilities module. A couple, one, one reason that we can't just flip it on is we have been using the facilities module that is the legacy module that, that came with the software. And because we take bookings 12 months out for many of our event types, we continue to put those bookings in the same module, working off of this kind of a leapfrog of calendar. Staff actually told me, members of my team and members of athletics are working on this beginning, actually, this week. They're having a reservation party where they are entering all of the new reservations for the first time into the new module, which will then make them accessible and visible in that new module, editable in the new module, and it will allow us to use that copy function, which is life-changing on some of these reservations. And it is the first step of us turning the corner on that. So, short answer, long, yes, we will be able to turn on a lot of that functionality, not all of it. Some of it takes a human touch. The balancing especially of athletic fields and requests requires a human touch. There's a lot of overlap of the way fields work, and it is not as straightforward as allowing people to click-click through it. Requests, though, that is something that we can certainly continue to work towards in all of the event types.
Okay, so it would be helpful to me to understand what additional resources you would need to be able to get more functionality up and running for folks, to be able to make those types of requests via the same tool that they're using for everything else that they do with us. I don't expect that right now, so if you could come back to me at a later date when you have a better feel for that, that'd be great. My last question maybe has nothing to do with ActiveNet, but we had talked a little while ago about parking permits becoming a stickerless option and for people to be able to do that via, via our tools, both mobile and desktop. Is that something that is going to be up and running when the new version of ActiveNet goes live?
Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Commissioner, Commissioner Musich, actually, it is not an ActiveNet thing.
Okay.
It is through our Cali Flowbird software. I can answer the question because I know it. The functionality exists, I need a staff person to implement the program, and I have yet to fill the vacancy that I need to fill in order to implement. So I am working with Human Resources. Actually, we started the discussions this week on working on filling that vacancy upon doing so. It'll be one of the projects on that new employees list.
Fantastic. If they could prioritize that so we could have it up and running before next summer, I know quite a few people that would really love that. Thank you.
You bet. I'm one of those people.
Commissioner Alper, I think I saw was next.
Oh. Sorry.
Thank you, I'm not on this committee. Appreciate you letting me speak. I just had a quick question. I'm just wondering, you mentioned the phone accounts. How many are we talking about ballpark here, people without email addresses or accounts without email addresses? A thousand? I saw, you know, the 25, 200, no, was it 250,000? 25,000?
250,000.
Factor of 10, okay, with the duplication of accounts. But what about the, I'm, I'm just curious for phone numbers.
Sure. Co-Chairs Schaefer and Thompson, Commissioner Alper. I don't have exact numbers. We don't know until we do the de-duplication. So that's been one thing that's been holding us up. I don't, I can't say for sure because we had a lot more, I believe. We had ActiveNet pull a report for us two years ago, and it was a lot. But we've retired so many accounts since then, I don't know which of the accounts were associated with the retired accounts versus what we've, what we have now. So once we do the de-duplication project with ActiveNet, because we really need their help to do that, otherwise it would be a manual thing. We have to pull 26, 27 reports, and they take, you know, 40 minutes to pull, and then you have to go through each one of those potential duplicates by hand. We're not going to do that, that's not a good use of our time. We've already worked with them on some professional services that would be part of this bundle, and this is one of them. I, I just can't say for sure. I would hate to ballpark it because I don't know.
Okay. I, I was just wondering if we're talking, you know, like 50 or 10,000?
Well, I would say somewhere between there.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
It's higher than 50 for sure.
Okay.
I would add more zeros.
Commissioner Menz.
Thanks. Thanks for holding the company accountable immediately and making sure that they get out here and help us optimize the system because there are a lot of functionality. To piggyback on what Commissioner Musich said, will, will there be a functionality for users who reserve fields or courts or picnic shelters to, to see what they've reserved in real time? I know that one of the limitations as a customer has been, you always got to email one guy to get a list, and then it's never changeable. So like, if I reserve something, can I see my list of reservations and maybe not modify them, but at least know exactly in real time, not in a PDF file? Like, will users have access to their reservations in the list?
Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Commissioner Menz, once the reservation is in the software, you can see it real time right now. You can see it on your customer account if you, it depends on how you're booking. So if you're booking on behalf of an agency, an association, a company, if you are the authorized agent of that company, agency, whatever it may be, you should be able to go in and see that on the customer account that's associated. If you are referring to, and I, I'm deducing that you may be referring to an athletic field request, right now, the athletic field requests are not put into the system until they are firmed up. So it's not the request that's sitting there and pending and then, you know, check a box. It's more complicated than that. So once the staff get it in the system, once it's processed, once you receive maybe an invoice or a copy of the permit, it's there.
And you, and, and I can log in and see it?
You can log in and see it. You can go to your customer account transaction history.
The other, the other question that I had about that was, and I'm assuming we're going to be, especially with the change with the REC Center Directors, I know that sometimes fields are, or spaces are internally reserved but never put into the system, and I'm assuming that's part of this process is the REC Center Directors will be putting those uses into the system to create a better accountability and workflow around that because I know that sometimes we have to make physical phone calls. I mean, like, is that part of this new ActiveNet training or update? Like, people are going to do that stuff?
Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Commissioner Menz, the, the intention is always that the staff, whether it be an internal booking or external booking, get that in the system so we can quantify it, one, for our data, and two, so our maintenance staff and other field staff understand what's happening at any given facility. So it is the intention that it's in there. It may not be visible on one side or the other. An internal reservation is just a different type of reservation, and so it should show up on a calendar report for maintenance or for police roll call or for staff as they understand what's happening at their facility at any given time. However, to your point about training, part of this package of kind of the relaunch and the system optimization is refresher training, and then we, we have access to a learning management tool, but it's kind of hard right now because the learning management tool is set for an optimized system. So when staff go in and they watch a given video or tutorial, it doesn't always match the way it looks on our end, and that makes it really confusing and actually not usable for us. So once we get to the way it's supposed to be, then all of those kind of sustaining training tools will be available to staff as well. Additionally, the work that Jamie and Lyndon are doing helps on, and Mimi mentioned this when she was presenting, it helps on that kind of accountability side, too, for everyone because if we have everything in one system, then the communication is there no matter if you are on one side of town or the other, or if you are on vacation, or you get relocated and put into a different facility, you should be able to go to the centralized system and see what's happening at any given time. And that was the charge that we, we started with back when we started to build the system in, you know, 08, 09, and implemented in 10, was that everything get in there.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, Co-Chair Thompson, for allowing me to speak for the second time on your committee that I do not serve on. I, I would like to piggyback off of what.
Want to piggyback?
What? Yes, we're stacking the piggybacking pretty deep now. Getting a little silly at 9:42. The, along the same lines, we've got people that are interested in trying to figure out, like, where they can have their kid's birthday party. Right now, it's incredibly difficult to figure out what's open because they end up calling places. They have to call each individual location to find out what's available. Will we have user visibility to what the schedule, open schedule is like or what the, what the schedule overall would be so they can see where there are openings that they might be able to squeeze in what they need to rent for versus what's already reserved?
Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Commissioner Musich, the functionality exists to, to provide that view. It depends on the way we have things turned on based on facility type, but as we roll out this new facilities module and we make those strategic steps on allowing for more self-service access for the customer and the new customer user interface, there will be opportunities for, for folks to see that type of availability information as we turn on those, probably starting with, at most, the reservation request functionality. But, but yes, that, that exists in the software. Right now, the way that we use the software allows for such a large list of available facilities that it makes it hard to view. The new functionality, much easier to view. It mimics that of maybe like an Outlook calendar kind of look with filtering so you can get to the type of facility you're looking for. What's hard about the, the Park Board and, and facilities is that not only do we have, and you all know how many, how many buildings we have, but within the software, every room, every reservable or every programmable space at any park becomes a facility. So you can imagine how that list grows and grows and grows. And when we first attempted to utilize that public-facing functionality, it crashed everything because it was just too much to load. So now with the new functionality, much easier to navigate and more user-friendly to allow to figure out what's available and what's not.
Okay. And are you anticipating that we will have that sort of view available for public use by the end of '23 or?
I hope so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I mean, not for everything, but we're going to start small, and I, I hope that we can get it for things that make the most sense. Straightforward rentals.
For example, like picnic shelters at rec centers and rooms, like community rooms.
Most likely, yes.
Fantastic, because that's where I get the most requests for that information, where people are pissed. I would love to get less angry phone calls, so thank you.
Okay, seeing no further lights, I would just like to say thank you. I also, I want to just thank all of our staff. These meetings can get tiring and long, and when you bring enthusiasm like you do for software, it just perks me up. So thank you. And with that, I would like to call the meeting of the Administration and Finance Committee adjourned.
I'm going to recount in the full board?
Only two more to go.
You read my mind, Commissioner Menz.
I'm going to reconvene the entire board here, and we are going to vote on bringing, goodness gracious, back.
Resolution 2022-290.
Yes, bringing Resolution 2022-290 back to the full board. All those.
I would move that motion, motion, I would move the resolution.
Second it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Passes. I am going to recess the full board. Nope. Adjourn the board. And on to.
Yep.
Planning.
And Secretary, is it the Planning Committee next or the Legislative Committee?
Planning Committee.
Okay. So I'll note that the time is 9:46, and with that, I would like to, pardon me. I would like to call the Planning Committee to order. Secretary, would you please take the role?
President Protem Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson, absent. Co-Chair Alper.
Here.
Co-Chair Bennet.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would someone like to move the agenda for approval?
Show moved.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. We have no minutes. We have a couple of action items, and so would someone on the committee like to move the first action item, action item 5.1, and read the resolution as it appears?
Yes. I would like to move Resolution 2022-285, Resolution approving encroachment permit for use of 3,991 square feet of land in front of the subject property at 100 Hennepin Avenue East and 15 Main Street Southeast, encroaching upon parkland at historic Main Street Park within Central Mississippi Regional Park, and waiving the collection of appropriate fees associated with this encroachment.
And I'm thinking we probably have a presentation? We do. I actually think that, I would like a presentation. Yeah? Because I have some questions on this one, so. Here comes Ms. Downey.
She's waited on that at least.
Yeah.
Good evening. Mine is not nearly as long as the others, so. This is just, this is first pages. Just introductory, of course, just restating the resolution. This is an aerial map, just to have you familiarized with the general area. It is basically across the river from Niklet Island on Hennepin, on the corner of Hennepin and Main Street Southeast. I don't know if you're, everyone's familiar with River Place. It's been there for a number of years, so. This is a little further in, so you can see that Hennepin Avenue as it travels eastward from downtown. It's basically that corner there. Here is, what I was hoping to do was to Google, you might be a little familiar from, a little bit more familiar with this photo. And this is just facing northward, going, actually facing Hennepin as you are on Main Street. And this is a photo as on Main Street facing somewhat southeast of the area. And as you, you might be able to see on the green glass enclosure, it says River Place. In your packet, you may have seen the agreement, and this is a survey of the area as you can As you can see, it's hatchmarked. That's the area that's, that actually totals the 3,991 square feet. And that's the area that's being requested by the RP Minneapolis Propco, I think it is, LLC. I want to stop and give you sort of a little bit of background. I haven't really given you sort of a primer on encroachments, but I should start by saying that there are a number of ways that encroachments count our attention. Sometimes we have customers call in and tell us there are things going on, and there might be some construction going on around the parkways or something, and some will say, hey, it looks like they're building something on parkland. Or, or it'll be a park board member, park board staff member who's driving around the system and notices something. And then in this case, it was one of our employees, our staff members, actually from planning, Tom Johnson, who was driving along, I believe, Main Street and saw that there was work being done on parkland. And in those cases, he stops and usually has them cease and desist, and typically sends me an email and asks them to, has my, my assistant send out either an email or a letter asking them to cease and desist until they receive the proper, either permission to travel across parkland, or to apply for an encroachment permit if they want to have the use of parkland. So that is what happened here. And the other thing I'd like to add, happens more times than we like. There's often cases in which the city of Minneapolis grants permission to property owners for use of parkland when they shouldn't. I don't know if they sometimes check, don't check to see that sparkline? There's Deputy Secretary over there, who's laughing. So, and that's what happened in this case. So they did cooperate, and they ceased and desisted with their activities. They had started to, actually started to remove some of the pavers here, because they were under the impression that the property they were working on was part of their property, and that the city had given them permits to start working on the property. Well, as they were notified by us that that's parkland, we did, it took us quite some time to figure out where the property line was from surveys, and also whether there was an existing encroachment permit. Well, I don't know if you know, River Place has been there for more than 36 years. No encroachment permit, really? Well, we found out there was none. Sort of a longer story, but I think it's probably CPED, they probably had some development, deal going on with whoever built River Place, but for some odd reason, they never finished this particular part of the encroachment permit. So here we are, and the property owners are doing their proper due diligence and applying to the park board for an encroachment permit. So in this particular instance, as you saw from the photos, it's very difficult to know where parkland starts and where the private land start, you know, ends. So in most cases, our park users use it as if, you know, they keep walking and they use it as they need to. So we do have our property, I think.
Property manager.
Property manager, and then also our.
Architect.
Architect. So I was going to say, probably see developer, but they, I believe, have a little short presentation to tell you more about what they plan to do with the area. And I should, probably in my portion, to tell you that they did cease and desist, but as we know with Minnesota weather, with winter coming, because their plans are so close to what was already there, and also improving the space, and putting back the pavers to be in consistency with this historic district, we had them go ahead and do it because we're like, we don't want it ripped up, we need everything put back. So the permit, of course, doesn't mean that the board can't say no, because they would have to then, you know, take out, or whatever the case may be. But in most case, I mean, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say most cases. In this particular case, if the permit is not granted, it will not be, you know, we're not going to fence it off in most cases, because it's been so, for so long, there won't be a fence there. That would make very little sense for us, at least. But it's more about control of them being able to maintain or repair the pavers to the standards that are consistent with their property. So if you have any questions, it may before I pass it on to property manager and architect.
I would, I actually like to maybe, if there's another presentation, have that first, and then do kind of questions altogether.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me try to pull those up really quick. Hello.
Oh, sure.
It's Katie, and I don't know how.
Queasly.
Queasly.
Yes, yes.
Yes, you can see that's Chair Bennet, and then the rest of the commissioners.
Good evening, Chair Bennet and the rest of the commissioners. I'm Katie Queasly. I am representing the architect, texture firm, Perkins &amp; Will, and also here on behalf of Crestlight Capital, the owner of the property. And this is Donna Becker, the property manager. So I'm going to present to you kind of the state of the problem, and then what we're proposing to do. So this existing plaza, we were under the impression that this agreement had been in place. The property management has been maintaining this space for the past 40 years, taking care of repairs that include plantings or paver repairs. And it was under the assumption that the legal agreement was already in place. We came to find out it is not, so that's why we're presenting this. But the ownership group changed hands a little over two years ago, and they are doing a massive repositioning project of this office campus that includes four different buildings. It's centered around this existing plaza that is a very hardscape formal plaza, which was great when this campus was built. It had more of a day-to-night use, so there's lots of bustling activity at all times. Right now, it sits largely vacant most of the time, and in a bit of disrepair. This is the existing fountain that no longer functions, hasn't functioned since they brought the, bought the property. And a lot of these pavers have settled and cracked. So this is some observations we made over two years ago of the property, of things that could be improved upon. This is the aerial view of the existing site, so I'm showing you this so that when we get to a survey, it makes a little more sense. You can anchor yourself around that fountain here. This is a stable building that was relocated to the property in the 80s, but it is a historic stable building. Used to be the Phillips Distillery, and now sits vacant. But we're adding and opening up this corner view, so you look down the bridge that crosses onto Niklet Island, really trying to draw more people outside and into this space. This is that area identifying the 3,991 square feet of the plaza that we're requesting the encroachment license for. Some of the challenges of that existing plaza that I pointed out in photograph, just listed here. I won't read through those, it's too late at night. This is the state of the pavers. It's really not accessible. There's a lot of grade changes here that are over, you know, that standard quarter-inch required for a walking surface. And then in order to get into the stable building, you can see just the edge of the ramp that was added. I don't know if we have a better picture of that. Sorry, just going to try to jump back. But that projected out straight perpendicular into the plaza and really cut off the main central axis. It's kind of done, you know, as a retrofit, but didn't make a lot of sense for the site overall. Comes out here. So these are some of the problems we're trying to solve. We wanted to create a more memorable public space that encourages people to use the space and be more flexibility, or offer more flexibility for those existing buildings to be sighted and activated within the plaza. So what we're proposing here is to reroute that ADA ramp just adjacent to the building and set that within some existing paved walls. And then here, we're going to create a planted edge rather than, there's kind of a tapered stair that settles down because the grade changes. So we'll create a more pronounced entrance at the corner and at the direct access of River Place, so that this really feels more enclosed. And then replacing some of those pavers in the center with some artificial turf that really will allow people to, you know, promote their own active use in the center. This is a dog-friendly campus, so we selected a turf that is friendly to pets, cleanable and stands up to those kinds of uses. There's a trellis that I'm pointing out here. The idea is that we can orient this as a lawn and have maybe a stage put under this trellis. There's some swings that attach to this overhead element that really unifies this whole introduction here, calling that the steel ribbon. And then as you, that draws you back into the more private part of the plaza, we're installing some permanent gas fireplaces and cantina lights that string from Brown Ryan to the, what we're calling the Link Building now. So a much more intimate. The idea is that we're really searching for a food and beverage use in this building, something like sea salt or something. We'd love a park, park restaurant there, but something like that, where people can just walk up, grab and go, have a beverage outside in this space would be wonderful. Pointing out some of those new features in plan, so we've got swings on this side of the ribbon, an overhead trellis that frames the, in this, it's planned north. New plantings and trees throughout, so plantings on this edge, really in all of these green spaces, and then new trees back here. The trees that had been in the space had been overgrown and past their prime, and they were limited by these planters, so we've taken them out, set them in the ground. Resetting pavers where needed, adding new furniture, a variety of different seating types to promote, you know, equity and use, a better and more accessible entrance at that stable building, and then the gas fireplaces in the back. Identifying again, just some pavement improvements, and then a rough highlight of where this area is on the new plan.
Is that the eastern area?
Yeah, that's the, and it's, it's a rough PowerPoint outline. But just overlaying that to the new construction plan. Perspective of virtual people using the spaces. And then that back area, the fireplaces. Another view with the ribbon pulling you through the site. And then some of the furniture that will be provided. I think that is the last slide of this.
Okay, thank you. I think there's, see, I can't, when we, when we lift the monitor up, I can't see. So with that, it looks like Commissioner, my co-chair, Alper has a question or a comment?
Yeah, I think this is for staff. Do we, which, I recollect that the park board owns one side of Main Street. Is that correct? And the other side is the city of Minneapolis, that the, the right-of-way, the jurisdiction is split down the middle, is that?
Not in that area.
No? Not in that area?
We own all of Main Street.
All of Main Street?
But all the way down to a particular street. I can't remember exactly what street. So it's not one side of it, it's the, all of Main Street down the, to the Riverbank.
Okay.
And obviously, it's more than Main Street, it goes up to.
Right.
Yeah. I wanted to, if I could.
That's okay.
Was there another question?
No.
I don't miss it. I'm sorry. Chair Bennet, Commissioner Alper, if there, was there something else? I'm sorry, I interrupted. I apologize.
No, I think she, I think you're finished, yeah? But I have a bunch of questions. And.
Do you want to go first?
I think, yeah, let me, let me just kind of ask a couple of things, and I think there's a couple of things that maybe are noteworthy here. So one question I would have is if this was a residential parcel on a parkway, and there's a broad, wide boulevard, and a lot, and the, and the property line comes back in, there's some expectation that the resident is going to mow the grass, or take care of the lawn, not do heavy plantings and all of that, there's some rules around that. But if it's left as grass, they, they mow it, they rake, they shovel the sidewalks, right? So there's a certain amount of maintenance expected in, of parkland adjacent to properties. Is that accurate? Yeah, okay.
Chair Bennet, I, I believe that's correct. But in this case, it's more than, it's, it's the pavers.
It's the pavers, yeah.
And those historical, and keeping those up are, I think, very cost prohibitive, and I think that's one of the things that has been sort of kept up by the property owner, obviously, over 36 years.
Yeah.
And just recently, they've become the new property owner, so that was within the last two years, so.
I understand. And I think, but the, the pavers themselves aren't, aren't a designation that's required by the park board, it's required by some other historic district. So the park board is not the entity requiring pavers there in the first place. And then I'll, I'll just comment that the, that the whole system and that whole area does look a little derelict, so. I know it's not, and I mean this all respectfully, but it's not the current owner's issue, but you can see over time, even if with the agreements in place, things can kind of fall apart. But I guess my other real concerns here, it's nothing that anybody's done, other than the city, I think, issuing permits, and the city advancing this work, and, and no one really catching the property lines. I mean, that's, in my day job, that's one of the first things that I freak out about, is where are the property lines? Do we know where they are? And so I'll ask this question. Does the park board ever have access to, and this is a CPED project, too, so does the park board ever have access to projects that get put into the LIM system? I'm sorry.
Chair Bennet, I'm sorry, to the what system?
The LIM, I'm sorry. LIM system, I'm sorry.
I unfortunately am not familiar, but perhaps my, they do not.
Okay.
I would also note, from what I understand, the city probably thought that was right-of-way. So.
Yeah.
And I think that CPED's involvement was some years ago, so like 1982, I believe. So I don't know that they were involved in this particular.
Oh, okay, I was reading that they were involved in the redevelopment of this place. Excuse my voice.
And I think that, I'm sorry, I think that was the initial involvement, when they were developing the whole place with River Place was basically being done and put together the parcels.
Okay, so it was literally the permit counter that was being addressed, or, but I would, I would assume with the hiring of Perkins &amp; Will, that it went into some kind of development review or permitting. I'm seeing a head nod back there. So I guarantee this is in their LIM system. And what I would say is if there's any way for, for the park board to ever be, and get, get circulation, or get, get some view into the list of projects going into LIM, so you can verify if things are adjacent to your property, I would highly recommend that. I'm going to stop for now. Commissioner Schaefer, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm a little ignorant in how these works, but it's surprising to me that a property would have been sold two years ago and not know where the actual property lines were of the property.
of the property.
I think that's a question for the company.
Yeah, I, I do think the property lines were known.
I think the idea was that there was already an agreement in place like the one we're seeking now. And there was a point in the process where we thought we found that agreement historically from 1988 or 89, when this property was built. And so we went into the system. And, and the Park Board did review this as part of, we did a certificate of no change and there were comments, but the comments were about like tree preservation. So the Park Board did review this as part of the permitting process, but it was not apparently in the right order of operations, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was glad to see there's no buildings that are sitting, you know, the little square corner there. And I guess my other question is, I, I support this encroachment, but I, I, I feel like we should charge easement fees, is my feeling. I feel like, well, you know me from last week, two weeks ago. I feel like our, our responsibility is to, to understand where this is happening and, and not to negate the good history that this property has had there, but that we should, that we should ask people that are putting a private business right in kind of a plaza area, that if they are encroaching on parkland, that they should pay the easement fees. That's my first blush response. I don't know if my commissioners have any thoughts.
Yes, I do. And Commissioner Alper just turned her light on, so yes, would you like to?
Oh, sure. Okay, so first of all, could you bring back the presentation with the little red, the rough outline, please?
Yeah, do you have the list of the betterments?
Oh, I don't have that list. Yeah.
Oh, there it was. I saw it. No, that, that was...
That's the one you want?
Yeah, that's the one.
If I, I'm sorry.
That one.
Chair Benny, Commissioner Alper, if I could also note, one of the things that I wanted to be able to do is bring up the, the information that was actually included in your packet. Unfortunately, I have a new laptop, so I wasn't able to print it off. And so the betterments that were listed in that, I was hoping to be able to give them to her. She wanted to be able to review those with you so that she would, you know, as the betterments is one of the things she wanted to review with you, but I don't have them unfortunately. So they would be in your packet in terms of the list of things that they are offering. And she wanted to just reiterate those as being things that wouldn't have been done had it been just basically put back as pavers, so. Or left as pavers, I'll say.
Thank you. So I, I did have a follow-up to, to this. So I guess, well, two things. So one of which is I'm wondering about our general approach or consistency with the Parks for All Plan with synthetic turf? Are there any thoughts there from staff?
Chair Benny, Commissioner Alper, there's some guidance from a bunch of years back around synthetic turf when we implement it for our recreational purposes. I think the, the action here before you would be essentially to, to allow another party to operate, to operate land that is ours. They, they would operate it in, in their way, similar to anytime we approve an encroachment, you know, through, through our parkway area, like if it's a driveway or a, or an access path. We don't often actually get into much of a discussion about what that material actually is because we're, we're kind of allowing that to exist as the adjacent owner wants it to be. So in this case, I don't know if that guidance around synthetic turf would apply to this owner unless it ultimately, I guess, affected your decision on the encroachment itself.
Thanks for that thought. I guess the other, you know, the thing that this really brings up for me is that it feels like we're not approaching encroachments the same way across the whole city, you know, and we're, we're not applying the same standard or having a really clear idea of what that standard is, just to sort of piggyback on what you were saying about, you know, well, what is regular, you know, what we expect residents to mow the lawn and, you know, to rake the leaves, that sort of thing. So, you know, so likewise, I mean, I, I, I hear you, what you're saying about that we don't necessarily, with encroachment permits, we don't necessarily say what they can or cannot do there, but I, I don't know. I need to think about it. Thanks.
Commissioner Schaefer? Oh. So I guess I, I have a, you know, just a couple more thoughts on, in that regard. And, you know, I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with some of the inconsistency too and that, you know, there's some things where we are pretty precisely looking at the situation, the letter of the law in, in charging a fee, you know, to a resident or something like this, but in this case, we're waiving it. And the idea of betterments and respectfully submitted, and, you know, maybe Council Rice can weigh in on that term if it has a legal definition that I don't know of, but my understanding is that it basically has something to do with value add to improve a property. But in this case, truly, it isn't really the Park Board's property that's being improved by these betterments. It's these, this, it's your property. And then for, and then the use of our land is a, is a betterment for your property, that the citizens are giving up at no cost. So I'm, I'm actually really uncomfortable with this one, I have to say. Council Rice, could you speak to betterments? Is that a legal term or?
Yes, Chair Benny, I think this is a, this is, the, the concept of betterment, I think, is something the planning department has developed where what they look at is what investment is being put on park property that would basically, were the Park Board to maintain this? The question would be what would it cost to maintain the land since it is Park Board property and there'd have to be some expenditure by the Park Board to maintain a space? And if a private party or another entity was going to make an investment that the Park Board would otherwise make, there's an avoided cost by the Park Board or a savings to the Park Board if the Park Board was going to do that. I, I guess I'd have to defer to either Christine or Mr. Schroeder. I mean, I think the planning staff has had these ideas and talked about them. And so it, it's something they've considered and it's a, you know, it's a reasonable approach to how you look at land management with a system as big as the Park Board. So it's, I think Mr. Schroeder might be better to answer that question. But I'm familiar with the concept and it's something the Park Board has brought to bear on other matters.
So, so maybe I can help a little bit with the question about betterments and maybe a little bit about how, how this is a particularly unique case. Number one, as Council Rice was describing, betterments would be something that is an improvement to parkland that we would, we might be required to do on our own. And if you look at past cases, the betterments might be, in the case of the Kinnonwood Channel, the replacement or restoration of walls that we couldn't afford to do. It was an improvement that we would be obligated to make on our own, that somebody else is doing on our behalf, on our parkland. In, in this particular case, I think one of the things that, that we don't want to overlook is that we're not the only jurisdiction that has oversight over how this area was developed. The St. Anthony Falls Historic District is, is likely mandating that we perpetuate cobble streets and brick sidewalks here. Those are things that are beyond our control. And, and if you look at other places within this stretch of riverfront, and your question about where Main Street actually exists is really important because Main Street exists up to the front door of the buildings along, along the non- riverside of the street. So we're responsible for perpetuating that, and that pavement in accordance with the directives of the, of the St. Anthony Falls Historic District or St. Anthony Falls Historic Preservation Port. So in, in this case, the idea that they are providing pavers that are walkable, I think, is what we're trying to get to as, as the idea of betterment. But for this project, we might be out there replacing them ourselves, is what I'm getting to. And that's the notion of the betterment. The other thing that we look at is the value of those betterments have to exceed the value of, of what the fee would be for the encroaching, through the encroachment.
Yeah, thank you. The, the packets had the calculation in there of, yeah, that and the past, past estimate of betterments. Oh, yeah.
And I think Mr. Schroeder had, they did that properly. And I would say, and this was, to his point, I mentioned it earlier, this was a very unique transaction. It, the development was done in the early eighties. And at the time that this happened, there was a mass, there was a very high-level discussion between the city and the Park Board about what, how the riverfront would be handled. And along with Main Street and the East Bank came Niccolat Island and a whole bunch of other things like 99-year leases on residents on the island and a bunch of other things. You even heard about some of it earlier tonight in open time. So it, it is a bit different. I can't say there is a interest on the Park Board. We have, you heard another part this evening about lawsuits and things like that. We have had on occasion lawsuits along the sidewalk here, not at this part, but on occasion there, we've gotten lawsuits further on about the level of the tripping on the sidewalks. And that actually is a, we have some discretionary immunity on those cases. We've been successful. But having said that, there's still an obligation to make sure these sidewalks and there's some level of maintenance that occurs on here. So it, it's, it's a bit unique. On the other hand, I think that you're asking questions, you're the board, you get to decide these questions.
And actually, that brings up another concern that I have is that, you know, I'm sure this is going to be a successful project. And I'm so sorry, I mean this respectfully, but if it's not a successful project in five years, you know, we've granted this and now we're stuck with the maintenance of this space, you know, if there is no entity to actually count on to do the maintenance of the space. There's no guarantee at this point. If we, if we waive all these fees, we are, we're counting on the fact that this will be a successful endeavor for the next 40 years. And that's, I, I think, a big risk. No. So I guess, you know, is there, is there, could the, the area outside of what, what functions like a public sidewalk here? So there's the space that, you know, functions like Main Street's public sidewalk that has to remain, pavers and so on. But the other part of the parkland, further toward the property, could that become green space? Maybe some plantings, a lower maintenance, green, you know, scape? Commissioner Schaefer?
The license, our license agreements do require the licensee to maintain... That's paragraph five. They have the obligation to, for maintenance and repair of the area. So that would stay on them under this agreement.
As long as the agreement is...
Is in effect.
And the agreement is going forever?
We could, you could terminate it in 90 days.
It can be terminated by the Park Board, but if it's not terminated by the Park Board, how long is the agreement in place?
Till it's terminated by the Park Board, forever.
Commissioner Schaefer?
So is this a permanent easement? Is this considered a permanent easement? I mean, I know we went through some of these with the U of M, I think it was in 2021, about a parking lot or...
I'll let Christine talk about it, but it's an actually, it's, it's not, it's a license.
Chair Benny, Commissioner Schaefer.
An encroachment permit.
It's actually, it's a misnomer. It's not actually a permit, but it actually is a license agreement. So it's not an easement. It is a longer-term permission to use the land than a permit would be, but it's revocable. As you said, within 90 days, they'd have to basically stop using it as they wanted to, you know, if we wanted to revoke the encroachment permit. It is an agreement that can be revoked. So it's a license agreement and it's not an easement.
Co-chair Alper?
Okay, so I think, I think this is daylighting some, some issues here, you know, whatever they're called. In our resolution, it does say encroachment permit, but, you know, license agreements. I guess, I guess I feel, you know, betterments, maybe I don't have the exact definition, but when I think of a betterment, I mean, I think of something beneficial and I'm thinking of it in terms of beneficial to us, the park system. And I, I feel uncomfortable with just, you know, I, thinking about the, giving, giving it all away for, in perpetuity with that 90-day revocable nature with, with waiving all fees. I, I see the benefit of, you know, maybe there could be a recalculation of assessing a fee, giving, granting the whole encroachment permit, but assessing the fee for the, the portion that is not sort of mimicking the public sidewalk, that includes the synthetic turf area and the ADA ramp. So I guess at this time, I'm not totally comfortable with just, just approving it as is, especially when you think about it's $181,000, $181,000 fee that we are giving away. And I, I would hope, I, I don't know how long, have we done the calculation for how long it would take for us to spend that much in, in maintenance on that? I, I don't know if we have that answer.
Well, the estimate in the packet was that $40,000 was spent in the last, by the, on the maintenance over the last 40 years. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yep.
Hello, my name is Donna Becker. I'm the Senior General Manager for River Place. And I actually started in April of '21, and a client bought the property in December of '20. And I think I'd like to kind of address just a couple of things about the property. I am excited about the property. And I, our goal is with, you know, the client vision and with Perkins and Will's, River Place is a four-building complex. And it has been kind of underutilized, and they focused on renovating what we call the studio now, which is a former East Bridge office building, as well as exposition hall, we're calling the main hall, and then this plaza area. And I think from the pictures that you've seen from Perkins and Will, the existing part, is it was unrealized. It's not activated. And it is our intent and the client's intent, they wanted to have a positive impact on the community because there is no clear delineation that you're walking, when Christine and I were having those conversations, that I'm in the Park Board or I'm in the property. It really is meant to be open to the riverfront. Some things that we've already kind of done inside the building, we have interior bike rooms that we have purchased branded bicycles for our employees to use. And another thing that we have done is I worked with the city of Minneapolis to do pianos on parade. It was the first time they told us they went across the river. And I also have a connection with McPhail, so I extended those artists throughout. And the goal is to have activity. Before I started this job, I actually went down there on weekends to see the activity. This is highly visible to the Park Board. I think that in itself with the things that we're programming for it, with, again, this piano on parades, it's going to be a CSA could be out there. It's the new concept of live, work, play when you're trying to get these employees to go back to the workforce. And these companies that rent here, that's... to go back to the workforce, and these companies that rent here, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for those amenities that we can offer them. We also have a green terrace roof on this particular property right above, well, let me see, it would be in this area right here. That's a great amenity. We have our main hall, which is here. We have our whole first-floor lobby that we're adding some new retail to it. Again, we do have this building, which is called the stable. It's been vacant for about three years, so there is a benefit, I would agree, Commissioner, that this is a benefit, that it's been vacant for three years, it's 10,000 square feet. The client, you know, is looking to lease it. We're, again, we're looking to bring those employees back to the workforce.
Thank you. I appreciate that additional.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Oh, in regards to maintenance, they do maintain the entire sidewalk in front of the property, all the way down to Wild Cafe. We've got our grand staircase, we're going under major repair for that. I think if you walked by it, you would have seen, everything has to be waterproof coating. We do the snow removal. So, the amount of that 40,000 is really, it was just a small percentage based upon that square footage, but if you look over the entire thing of the property, also at the studio, we maintain all of that sidewalk too as well. So.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
I really appreciate all the enthusiasm, and this is obviously going to be a great project, and so it is exciting, and I think what we're wrestling with as a board is our own, supporting our own policies, right, as a governmental agency, and how we need to try to be consistent and think through these things as a new board. My question that I had for you was, are you going to be having onsite security for this space, or how will MPD and Park Police begin calls for, you know, drinking in the corners or, you know? I'm not saying that's going to happen here, I just would like to understand our responsibilities and how you view that process.
We currently have 24/7 security onsite with American Security, and they do patrols throughout the property. So, no, the intent is, we have cameras throughout, we have over 100 cameras throughout the campus. So, it would be, I think, again, part of that resolution was to have an agreement, the client has agreed to that they are going to maintain this area, and security would be a part of that.
Commissioner Menz.
Thank you. I'm not on this committee. So, I'm wondering if I could, so, from what I could tell, this will increase the occupancy rate of the building, per se. So, one thing that I've been wrestling with is like, we, the tax base is being spread out more in the property owners. The one thing that our city does need is more people in these buildings that have been deoccupied from COVID. So, I mean, if the occupancy rate goes up and the valuation goes up, then the taxes on that building go up, and it lessens the tax load for the other taxpaying citizens. So, there is a possibility of a long-term benefit that the park board would recap, and it's also, that is really important to the overall structure of the city, but I don't like the turf.
Are there other comments? Anybody else? Also, I will say, I don't really, I think the turf on the parkland is maybe an issue, and a couple of us have brought that up, so. With that, I think, I think we're ready to vote on this resolution. So, all those in favor of this resolution as it stands signify by saying aye. Opposed? No?
No. No.
I support this resolution with an amendment, but no in its current form. I don't know, did we all vote?
We all voted, and we all voted no. So, it doesn't pass. That means that it could, it could be brought back by one of us, as I understand it, that voted no. So, maybe there's an opportunity to kind of just take a little bit of another run at this one.
Or I'm happy to propose an amendment, suspend the rules to pass it with the paying of the easement fees. Whatever, if people want more time to think about.
Secretary, we already, I would say.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Yes.
This motion has been considered.
Yes.
And has failed.
Yeah.
So, at this time, further discussion of this item would no longer be in order. Is that correct, parliamentary and rice?
It would unless one of the members who voted on the prevailing side moved to reconsider.
And since that wasn't part of the agenda, would they need to suspend the rules to then make a motion?
No, not a motion to reconsider.
Wonderful. Thank you for providing that additional information.
That does not carry, so we're going to move on. So, would someone on the committee read the next action, item 52, resolution and the agenda on the, as it appears?
I'll read it. I'd like to make a motion to bring forward Resolution 2022-286, granting an access and license agreement to Arvig Enterprises, Inc., for underground telecommunications fiber-optic line in Harvard Street Southeast and Fulton Street Southeast located within the Mississippi Gorge Regional Park, and collecting appropriate fees associated with the access and license agreement.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Does any, would anyone like a presentation on this? Okay. So, I think we can go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes. That's the last item on the Planning Committee agenda, so I will now adjourn the Planning Committee, but we do have one more committee. Okay, the time is 10:37, and I would like to call the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee to order. Secretary, would you please take the roll?
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
President Pro Tem Smith.
Not here.
I'm here.
Commissioner Menz.
Here.
Co-Chair Olson. Co-Chair Bennie.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would someone move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. With that, this is not a lot on here, and we do have one study item related to our 2022 Legislative Session Report, and I saw Ms. Golkamire. There she is.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Smith and Co-Chair Bennie. Yes, so, we had been waiting, hoping for a special session to do this report, but it doesn't, could still happen, but it doesn't seem as likely, right? Right. So, it was a bonding year, and the bonding bill didn't come to fruition, and the supplemental budget bills, I think only one, I think it was just agriculture and broadband, actually passed. But we wanted to highlight a few things and kind of tee up thoughts about next session, and we will be, I'm working on the draft, proposed draft legislative agenda, which I'll be sharing with you guys soon, and then we hope to have it on the legislate, or plan to have it on Legislative Committee Board Action December 7th, and then we will do the final action with the full board following our legislative breakfast, which will be in January. So, Frankie Johnson, who has been instrumental for a long time, but, I mean, she is, does amazing work, so very glad to have her.
Thank you. I'll try and keep it brief but informative. All right. So, 2022 Legislative Session highlights, despite it being a bonding year, the state legislature adjourned on May 23 without passing one or most of the supplemental spending bills negotiated in conference committees. The 2023 session convenes on January 3, 2023 is a budget year, and legislators will need to pass a two-year budget before they adjourn. Bonding requests, Met Council bonding. Metro Parks requested $30 million for the regional park system, which would have brought a $10 million Met Council match. The following NPRB projects were included in that request, and this request was not passed in, as there was no bonding bill that was passed this session. But our request would have covered loose-line regional trail, land acquisition and trail implementation for 1.73 million. Shingle Creek Regional Trail Master Plan Implementation for $2 million. Victory Worth Memorial Parkway Regional Trail Recreation Trail and Environmental Improvements for $550,000. Above the Falls Regional Park and Upper Harbor Terminal Park for $440,000. The Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park Master Plan Implementation for 1.317 million. Additional bonding requests, NPRB bonding specifically, the park board request for 2022 totaled $35.3 million and covered North Commons Regional Vision for $6 million. We were awarded $5.125 million for this project in 2020. The Grand Round's missing link phase one at $12.3 million. Water Works Phase Two for $5 million, and Green, Green Infrastructure and Habit Restoration in Minneapolis Creeks for $12 million. Again, none of these were passed, as there was no bonding bill passed this session. Local government aid, NPRB is slated to receive $9.2 million in LGA this year outside of property taxes. This is the single largest source of revenue to the park system. This is lower than the 2010 amount of $10.6 million. The supplemental tax bill that failed to pass would have increased LGA appropriations. Lottery-in-lieu funding, the Metro Parks Coalition, along with support from the DNR and additional outdoor recreation groups, proposed to restore the portion of payment in lieu of sales tax from the sale of lottery tickets to 97% from the current level of 72.43%. This funding could mean as much as a $500,000 per year increase to the NPRB. Legislation was not passed. Legacy funding would continue to maintain the 40-40-20 legacy funding split for Metro DNR and Greater Minnesota Parks. It appropriates $21,712,000 in fiscal year 2022 and $22,149,000 in fiscal year 2023 for Metro Parks. This represents almost a 10% increase. The NPRB share was $4.66 million in fiscal year '22 and will be $4.755 million in fiscal year '23. Constitutional amendment to renew the ENRTF. Legislation was introduced but not passed to reauthorize the Minnesota Constitutional Amendment dedicating state lottery proceeds to fund the Environmental and Natural Resources Trust Fund. It specifies that not less than 50% of the net proceeds from any state-operated lottery must be credited to the fund until the year 2050. If passed by the voters, the constitutional amendment would go into effect in 2025. LCCMR funding, which was passed. For 2022, NPRB had three projects selected for consideration for funding from the Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources, which was the Bohemian Flats Restoration Project at $286,000, the BioBlitzes Engaging Community in Scientific Efforts at $198,000, and connecting the Mississippi Flyway to urban open space for $175,000. An LCCMR bill was passed into law in the 2022 Legislative Session and included the full funding request of $286,000 for Bohemian Flats restoration. The LCCMR has continued to meet over the summer to approve their project list for next year. Included in their approved project list for 2023 is BioBlitzes Engaging Community in Scientific Efforts at $198,000, connecting the Mississippi Flyway to urban open space for $190,000, and Above the Falls Regional Park Acquisition and Restoration. There was a $2 million ask, and they have currently slotted funding at $1.376 million. And the next step for this will be to pass this bill at the legislature in 2023. Teen Teamworks and Dede Grant Funding. The 2021 Omnibus Jobs Bill maintained the $750,000 per year from the General Fund and $3,348,000 per year from the Workforce Development Fund for the Youth at Work Competitive Grant Program. The NPRB received $175,000 in 2022 and will receive the same funding in 2023 for Teen Teamworks. Language was included in the supplemental jobs bill, which was not passed, which included $750,000 in a direct appropriation to the NPRB for youth employment programs. Frontline Worker Pay. Following much negotiation, legislation was passed to replenish the Unemployment Insurance Program Fund with $2.7 billion, providing $500 million for payments to eligible frontline workers, and gave $190 million to Governor Walz for ongoing response to the COVID-19 pandemic. NPRB workers who interfaced with the public daily during the pandemic in first responder, maintenance, and childcare settings were eligible to apply for this payment. I believe that was going out this fall. Emerald Ash Borer, Aquatic Invasive Species, Urban Forest Refunding. The supplemental environment bill, which has not passed, included $10 million for local governments to replace trees lost to Emerald Ash Borer, as well as language to implement a watercraft safety program aimed at educating watercraft operators on how to identify and prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species. Finally, a federal funding update. Representative Omar submitted $2 million in community project funding for North Commons Park, was adopted as part of the Transportation Housing and Urban Development Appropriation Bill, and as part of the city's Phase Two ARPA allocations, the NPRB received $3 million for North Commons Park and $1 million for tree planting in partnership with Green Minneapolis. That is all.
Thank you. It looks like we have light. Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, Co-Chair Bennie. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given an opportunity to speak. One of the slides you had up was about legacy funding. My understanding is that they have not ever fully funded the legacy funding for the park systems. How close was the number this year to what the fully funded number is supposed to be?
That is a good question. Are we?
I could try to answer that, but the statute.
Could you turn on your mic?
Yeah. Sorry, I could answer that. Commissioner Musich, Chair Bennie. The commitment from the legislature is 40% of operation and maintenance costs, and that's through lottery-in-lieu and general fund appropriations. The legacy is actually a capital grant program for capital programs, and the legacy dollars have been, the portion dedicated to parks is 14.6%, I think, of the, all the proceeds from the dedicated 3/8% on sales tax. And so, that money is dedicated to the park account, and then by statute, the 40-40-20 split has been established. So, the legislature.
You're done lobbying two different things together.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Great work. Our entire team, lobbying team, seriously, thank you for all the work you're doing to enhance the park system and supplement the monies that taxpayers in Minneapolis are paying to help support the system. It's, it's great. You're helping us do so much more than we could do without you, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity. Any other?
Other questions or comments? I see Commissioner Thompson's light.
I just have one. Tonight was clearly like a big numbers budget night. The bonding bill, like, obviously, do we, do we have any, and this is a question just for anybody left in the room, do we have, how that will impact us? Were we, were we planning on certain things to, to make us whole? Was it like a Christmas list, and it's like, okay, well, I didn't get the Nintendo, it was not that big of a deal, or is it like, you know, we needed this?
Chair Bennie, and Commissioner Thompson, it will have a significant effect on the next CIP. So, in two weeks, we're going to present a CIP to you that has to take into account that we have zeroed out our regional park bonding funding in 2023. And so, those projects which were listed on that screen, which are in the current CIP, were not funded. So, they will have to be either delayed, and then that will delay other projects within our CIP. So, I think you will start to see the effects of that when you review the draft CIP in two weeks. It's a challenge.
It's a challenge.
Chair Bennie?
Yes.
Just a quick shout out to Adam and Michael Schroeder, who's part of the legislative team, and Tom Workman's here too. Don works on it. It's a very integrated group, and of course Pamela and Frankie. But what Adam said is really important. The legislature should have done their work, and they should have passed a bonding bill this year, and we should have gotten at least the Met Council portion, which then is matched, and it's kind of the building block of our whole capital program, that we do ask for extra things, as you were saying, Commissioner Thompson, we do ask for the Nintendo. But to use a really bad analogy, at 1050, this was like your socks and underwear and shirts that you need to get from the Met Council on the base level that we need to do. We will keep the money for the legacy piece, but not having that annual bonding bill really hurt. And so the legislature, by not doing that basic function, which is kind of what they're supposed to do in the even year, the odd year is the budget year, and they can't leave until they get a budget for two years. But in the even year, they usually do a bonding bill, and that's kind of basic stuff. And we've, because of all the effort and the money the park board has put in about the lobbyists funding an IGR position, having a very strong planning department that can come up with great ideas, we usually get something. And this year, the soup was pretty thin. And so that means next year, when you do your budget, you're gonna, that's when it starts to show up.
Hopefully, the floodgates will open next year. It won't be an election, and there's still money. Oh, Commissioner Menz?
So yeah, so that means they can do a bonding bill next year. They just don't normally do a bonding bill.
Sometimes they do a smaller one during the budget year.
Could we have you approach the mics, so people on TV can hear you?
Sometimes during a budget year, they, even if they've passed a bonding year, in the even year, they will do a smaller bonding bill. But given the fact that they didn't do one at all last year, I mean, you know, I mean, they could do a big one, or a smaller one, or not at all, but it's certainly possible. All options are on the table.
We're going to plan for them doing one.
I mean, I would think they'd want to do one.
I would want to do one.
Yeah.
No, let's go home.
Commissioner Menz, your light is on. Okay, actually, I have a question, and I think it came up just a second ago, but I'm very tired. But the, so there's the, it's the Met Council money, it's the money, what's the money that has a statutory floor, and it's always below what we get?
That's the commitment by the legislature to fund 40% of the operation maintenance costs of the regional park system.
So I think, you know, I actually ran into someone, an elected official in the House, in the legislature, and this was news to him. So I think that would be a thing, maybe as the, as this wonderful team goes forward and starts to work their magic in the new year, is to really make some hay around that. And there was a, and there was a, there was a comment at one of the meetings we were attending, and one of the legislators said, when he was shocked to hear this was happening, and he said, boy, somebody should sue us. Now, I'm not suggesting that. But I think that having the legislature meet statutory minimums, I think, is what we all want.
Yeah, Chair Bennie. So this is an issue that not just us, but all of the 10 implementing agencies, we meet every Monday during session, and it's something we all really pushed. And all of our delegation, we meet with them, we have a breakfast in the House and the Senate, they're all well aware of this issue. So I mean, the one legislator you talked to may not have been, but it's not, it's not an issue that our people have not heard.
They may not remember it.
They may not remember it.
I just have one more quick question for Pamela. You know, we had heard that you were going to have this increase, you were working together with the other parks to have this increase in the O&M, where there was going to be a greater percentage of that total, whatever that percentage was. Was there traction at all in that? And remind me of what those numbers were.
Yes, so it was Chair Hanson.
Hanson.
In the Environment Committee had put in an increase, which was like from 79% to 97% in.
He actually did, there was an agreement at five minutes to midnight in the last day of session between.
And it literally was, we were texting it.
That they agreed to modestly increase the dedication of the proceeds from the lottery-in-lieu account that would have gotten us, I think, maybe about another half million dollars. It would have gotten us to 40%, but it would have gotten us to 13 and 1/2.
Over time, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was exciting to have it in there. And we had a lot of great things in the supplemental budget bills, but they just didn't make it over the finish line.
Are there other questions? Okay, well, with that, thank you so much, and I will adjourn this Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.